The webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later on the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast the meeting. We have received one set of member questions, no petitions, and four questions from members of the public. The agenda report for today's meeting is available on the council's website and a small amount of paper copies are also available for people in the room today. Please can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is of course no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation then please do take instruction from the town hall staff. And the assembly point is in Tudor Square. And please can I ask each member in turn to introduce themselves today? I should probably say hello, my name's Ben Miskel, I am Chair of the Committee and a councillor in Park and Arbuthnot Ward.
Mike. Good afternoon, I'm Mike Chaplin, I'm councillor for Southie Ward and I'm substituting for Sophia Seid today.
Good afternoon, my name's Craig Gumpel-Pew, I'm councillor for East Ecksford Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm Christian Gilligan-Cubo, I'm councillor for Hillsborough Ward and I'm Deputy Chair of this committee.
Good afternoon, my name's Ruth Mercer, I'm councillor for City Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Denise Fox, councillor for Burley Ward and a member of this committee, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Beecham Green Hill Ward and a member of this committee.
Good afternoon, I'm Andrew Sanger, I'm councillor for Forward Ward and I'm group spokesperson on this committee.
Good afternoon councillor Ian Auckland, a member of the committee and councillor for Graves Park Ward.
Thank you very much. So we'll crack on with our meeting today, which is our last meeting of the municipal year as well, so I'd like to thank colleagues and officers for their participation in the work of our committee. Item one is apologies for absence. An apology for absence has been received from councillor Sophia Seid, councillor Mike Chaplin is attending as her substitute. Are there any other apologies for absence in the room? I don't see anyone making a call for an apology or an absence. That moves us on to item two, which is a standing item about exclusion of the public and press. The meeting today is open to the public and there are no items on the agenda containing exempt information. Item three is declarations of interest and this is an opportunity for me to ask members whether they wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business today. And if you do then please could I ask you to refer to the item of business and state whether it's a pecuniary or personal interest and outline the reason for that declaration. Councillor Sanger.
Thank you Chair, item 19, Lodge Moore 20mph, a personal interest, I am award councillor in the area affected.
Thank you councillor Sanger, we will make a note of that for the minutes of the meeting. Item four is an opportunity for us to consider the minutes of our previous meeting. That meeting was held on the 14th of February and is contained in on pages 11 to 18 of your report pack. Can I ask that these be approved as a correct record of the meeting? Do I see that the committee is content with approving them? I'm seeing nods, so therefore those minutes have been passed. Item five is an important part of our meeting, which is public questions and petitions. We have received no petitions, but we have received four public questions for today's meeting. There would normally be a maximum of 30 minutes for this particular item. However, I understand that we have none of the public questioners in today, so therefore we'll make sure that we do issue them with a written response. For committee members' interest, we received one public question from Russell Johnson, we'll make sure that he gets a full written response. One from Joyce Green, again we'll make sure that she gets a full written response and is given that. We also received a public question from Lucy Ruck and we'll give her a full written response. And also Jenny Clark as well, this particular one came in after the deadline, but I was minded to accept it as well. So all of those will receive a full written response. That therefore leads us on to item six, which is member questions. And there's a maximum time limit of 10 questions for this whole item. Written questions for myself as Chair of the committee, two questions submitted by members in advance have been emailed, so an opportunity to ask questions have been emailed in advance. And the item of business is to provide an opportunity for members who had submitted questions to ask one supplementary question for each question asked. And I believe that Richard submitted a number of them, councillor Shaw, which is wonderful. Hopefully committee members have been given advanced sight of the questions that Richard has submitted. But Richard, you are welcome to ask any supplementaries.
Thank you Chair, I have a number of supplementaries, but I will try to be brief. Question three, thank you for your response regarding the old tramway tracks. At the time of the works councillor Sanger and I suggested to officers that these tracks might be offered to perhaps like local artists or even the Kreutz Tramway Museum where eight of the former trams that used to run on the old network now reside. What's going to happen to these tracks once they've been moved to the council depot?
Thank you councillor Shaw, so your question relates to specifically to the issue of unearthed tracks from our old tram network which we have now got. Clearly we're really excited about our current tram network and we know on the 22nd of March that that is coming back under public control and operation, which we'll all be celebrating. But this is an interesting glimpse, isn't it, into our transport system of old. Now, nothing yet has been decided about the future of these particular tram tracks that have been unearthed around Fargate, but of course I'd welcome the views from all members of the committee about ideas about how we use them. And I'd like us to jointly explore different options about what can be done with those old tram tracks. Personally, I'd like to see them incorporated into future regeneration projects that we are bringing forward as a council. And I know that councillor Shaw also has a number of ideas as well. So hopefully we can work together to come up with a solution for these tram tracks, but no firm conclusion about their future use has yet been decided.
Thank you Chair. Question 4B, thank you for your response regarding the safe and inclusive cycle infrastructure in Sheffield and the growing demand from the public. What would you say to elected members or indeed members of the public who might be concerned about these active travel projects that are happening around the city? And their concerns that they are perhaps only for the young and the fit and not for people who might have ability impairments, bearing in mind that you may have seen a diverse range of people attending these events, including people using non-standard cycles?
Thank you councillor Shaw and the keen interest that you do play in cycling around our city. It's really important, isn't it, that the events that we run in collaboration with other organisations like for example the British Cycling Board are inclusive and open to everyone. I'm particularly proud, and I know we all are, of initiatives like the Sky Ride, which we know are hugely successful in our city. We will want to make sure that they are inclusive and accessible for everyone and we'll continue to work with partners in order to do so. We need to make sure that cycling is seen as a pursuit for all and isn't simply just for those who are very avid cyclists like my dad for example.
Thanks Chair, and finally on question five, thank you for the very long list of potential 20mph zones. I know that we've only made it through perhaps a third of them so far. Just for clarification, could you tell me what the date range is for the statistics? Because there's on the list it shows a number of pedestrian or pedal cyclist casualties, but it doesn't say over what time period.
Thank you councillor Shaw. I think this is one where clearly we need to make sure that we get you a full written and technical answer to the time period that's mentioned in this rather complex spreadsheet that you've been provided. I think that's really important and we'll make sure that that comes to you in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Okay, that therefore moves us on to item seven, which is the work programme. The committee's work programme is attached in appendix one of the committee's pack of items and it's therefore our consideration and discussion. The aim is to show all of us the substantive agenda items that are forthcoming to our committee meetings in the future and to enable the committee, officers and partners to work together collaboratively on our work. We know that the work programme remains a live document and will be brought to each committee meeting. Amanda from Democratic Services is beside me. Amanda, is there anything else that we need to be mindful of about the work programme? Because we know that this is a live, living document and between our meetings is subject to discussions between members.
Thank you Chair, I've nothing further to add. I know that Will Stewart has committed to further development of the work programme moving forward, but nothing from me at this time.
Thank you, that's really appreciated for that clarification. And we can see that the recommendations are outlined on page 20 of your report pack. And on page 23, there are the proposed additions and amendments to the work programme since our last meeting. Is the committee content with us approving our work programme going forward? Councillor Gilligan-Cubo.
Yes, but I'm just unclear what's happening to the two items that were referred from full council, are they going on the work programme? I mean, it recommends they are, but they aren't actually on there.
I'll just ask for some guidance from Amanda.
I was actually looking up to find Tom or Will. They will feature on the work programme moving forward, once you've had your work programme and discussion outside of this committee.
And Will, I think you can add some further clarification.
Yeah, just on that wider point Chair, thank you, around work planning, I think one of the things that we did do as a committee last year was come together as officers and members and talk through work planning as a specific meeting. And I suggest if members agree that we do that again very soon after the administrative year commences following elections, because I think it's really important that we deal with items like councillor Gilligan-Cubo talked about, but also make sure that we reflect there are some items on the work programme that need to happen quite early in the new municipal year. Those are work streams that are already underway, which where officers are preparing information and reports. And then others where we need to reflect as a committee and make sure they're included. So my proposal, if members agree, is that we come together very soon after the elections to discuss the work programme and finalise what's on it.
Thank you Will for that overview. Councillor Gilligan-Cubo, are you content with that? I can see that you're nodding. Councillor Andrew Sanger.
Thank you Chair, can I thank you and the members of the committee and the officers for the work carried out this year. I still am troubled by the work programme. I think we've done a lot of work this year, we have 19 items on the agenda and I apologise for my veracity in taking up time now, but we are still challenged on this committee as colleagues are on stretching resources who equally have agendas that are too large. We have to find better ways. We have 375 pages today, I know that's better than the 15-50 pages we had in September, but that's still too many pages every month. So we still need to find a way of doing shorter reports and accept a lot of its appendices, so that would be one point. I continue to make the point that I would rather local transport schemes were delegated to lack cycling, that's a group position, not a view shared by members across other parties. I still think that transport and climate change go together quite well. Happy that there's a lead committee for climate change, happy for that. I still think regeneration will sit better with economic development. I'm just concerned that across all the policy committees, this committee seems to have more work to do and more issues and we struggle to deal with all the work in a timely manner. I think we've done very well this year, but I look back over my years as a councillor and we haven't dealt with any more transport schemes this year than any other year in particular. So the new, and it's partly no control, it's partly the committee system, but it's a challenging environment for members and officers to work at pace. And I remain concerned about the level of items that come before this committee. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanger, I think it's an important one, isn't it? And I think all these matters are subject to discussions that are ongoing at the council's governance committee about how we reform and change some of our processes. You know, we have in this committee talked about shorter reports and particularly from the perspective of how long it takes our officer colleagues to write these reports. I know that you've articulated about your desire to see the delegation of local transport schemes to local area committees. I understand that there are some discussions ongoing at the governance committee about delegating more matters to the local area committees. And also I think there are perhaps in future likely to be ongoing discussions about how we change our committees and perhaps even consider refocusing many of them around our council plan aims for example, which may well be quite a mature approach to take. Councillor Gumpel-Pew.
Yeah, thank you. I'd also like to thank officers for all the work that they've done this year, taking us through a really heavy workload of business. I also have argued consistently at this committee that these local transport schemes should be dealt with locally. So I don't recall our group taking a political decision on that, but I think we are clearly committed to devolution via the local area committees. We have been looking at ways that we can extend more decision-making to the local communities across the city, where people are more familiar with the level of detail that is appropriate for these schemes. So I think is there maybe a question for officers to advise us about what we can do to expedite that? Because it feels like it was one of the first things we talked about, the first meeting of this year, the last meeting of last municipal year, possibly the first meeting of last municipal year as well. So there's a bit of a cycle there.
Yes councillor Gumpel-Pew, it's quite clear that there is a kind of growing consensus amongst members across parties in the room about the principle of subsidiarity, the idea that actually decisions are best made closer to people in communities. I think it's probably incumbent upon all of us, we do as political parties and representatives on that governance committee, to be feeding in our views from the world of transport, regeneration and climate about some of the discussions that we have. So I'd invite you to do that from all sides of this room. So we have been discussing the work programme and we've had a bit of an overview and a discussion about it. I'd be keen to see whether members are content with us passing the work programme and moving on, obviously mindful of what Will said about in the new municipal year, how important it is for this committee, in whatever shape and form it is in, to come together to agree that work programme for one or perhaps even two municipal years, given that we have got that fallow year ahead really. I'm seeing nods around the room and we're quite content to pass that work programme. So before we move on to some of our substantive items on the agenda today, for each of the substantive items on our agenda, please could I remind everyone of the process that we're going to follow? This is particularly important due to the number of reports that are going to be considered today. The officers will be invited to present the report to committee. This will be followed by questions from members to officers. With agreement of colleagues in the room, I'm going to take those in rounds of three or more in order to get through them. Once all the questions have been asked and responses provided, we'll then move on to a discussion if necessary and members indicate that they would like to have one. After that discussion has taken place, the recommendations may be moved and seconded and taken to the vote. This of course will enable us to conduct the business of the meeting smoothly and efficiently and I'd like to thank everyone for their cooperation and agreement about that before the meeting. I'd also like to propose a change to the order of items on the agenda this afternoon to create a more logical flow to the decision-making process. With your agreement, I'd like to take the items in the order listed in front of us and that would be item eight, item 11, item 12, item 13, item 10, item nine, item 14, item 16, item 17, item 19, item 15 and item 18. Now if members are a little bit confused about that, they'll find that proposed order of agenda items in their inbox as well and Amanda sent that and she's also printed this out on your desk as well, which is really, really good. Can I ask, are we all agreed with that proposed agenda order? Also with feedback from councillors and officers, I'd like to propose that halfway in our meeting we have a short comfort break as well. So therefore we're going to move on to item eight, which is our 2023 to 24 quarter three budget monitoring update. That can be found on page 39 to 50 of our agenda pack and our presenting officer will be Jane. Hi Jane.
Thank you Chair. So the paper that you've got is the quarter three outturn position for 2324. The full paper is taken to finance committee next week, which is the full set of papers including the treasury management on the HRA, but this is a summary version for this committee. Some of you will already have heard this update, as I will be doing this update in many of the committees over the next couple of weeks. So overall, the council is forecasting an overspend in the general fund of 16.7 million against a net revenue budget of 493 million, which is a variance of 3.4%. In quarter two, that was presented in December, we forecast an outturn overspend of 17.4 million, so we've actually improved by 700,000 between the two quarters. But we did see a big swing in the education, children and families committee's budgets of over 2 million. The reason for this was an increased cost of placements plus a risk around the income we receive at our in-house provision, Aldean House, plus further demand in home-to-school transport of another half a million. This was largely offset by some further income received in adult social care and underspend in youth services, some improvements in commercial property budgets and further interest income from our cash balances from good interest rates. The three main areas for overspend for the council, which has been consistent throughout the year, has been in adult social care, children's social care and in homelessness. In adults, the service continues to be challenged by the increasing demand and inflating cost base, but they have got an ambitious recovery plan in the service with continuation of strength-based reviews and solid partnership working with health. In children's, we've got big challenges from the increasing costs of care and limited supply that we have in the city, but also limited foster carers. We've also got more and more children needing home-to-school transport provision for SEN children. We're supporting more than 2,360 children this year, which is more than 1,000 children more than we have four years ago. Homelessness, the situation has arisen post-lockdown, we've got a shortage of options in the city and we're using hotel and bed and breakfast accommodation to support temporary accommodation, which is not fully subsidised by the government, so the council is actually funding the subsidy gap in that area. And nationally, that's the highest that we've seen for 20 years. In spite of the emerging challenges that we've got for the council, we are on track to deliver 77% of the 47 million savings target that we put in place as part of the 2324 budget. There is however, an underlying pressure of 28.5 million in the accounts which do need to be addressed. Some of that's been offset by one-off income and grants or provisions this year, but we do need to address some of those underlying challenges. The committee overall is forecast and balanced, which is a good position to be at and not many of the committees are in a similar position, which is excellent. There's some concerns in planning and building control income where they're falling short of their budget by 800,000, but that has been offset by higher than expected income in highways network management. Nationally, similar issues that we're seeing across the board for other councils, so the last budget did not offer us any further solutions from central government, so we are going to have to take action at local level to underdress some of our underlying problems. We have previously talked about a 70 million reserve that we set aside two years ago to manage budget contingency and we've drawn from that over the past two years and that will leave 13 million at the end of this year, should we reach an overspend of 17 million this year. Through the budget planning process, we have identified an additional 12.5 million from our collection fund, which we are going to top up that reserve from, so that will take that reserve to 25 million by the end of the year and that was approved at full council last week. In the medium-term financial analysis highlights a 61 million budget gap over the next four years and the good news is we did manage to balance the budget for 2425 and that was agreed at full council last week. And that provided details of the savings that are needed for next year. So the savings targets are lower than in previous years, but we can't relax yet, we must continue to drive the delivery of the budgets and tackle those in-year overspends to make sure that budget gap does not get any wider. So in summary, the committee's asked to note the financial position for the council as a whole and for the committee and the final outturn position for the year will be presented to the committees in June. So I'm happy to invite any questions on the financial position from members, thank you.
Thank you Jane for running committee members through that. I can see that councillor Gilligan-Cubo is indicating to speak.
Yeah, thank you for that. I don't think this question is for you really, but it's a question. Why are our planning applications falling short of income targets and what are we going to do about it?
That might be one for Will to answer.
Will, are you happy to answer that? Mindful that you may not be able to provide the information at present, we might have to provide a written answer for councillor Gilligan-Cubo.
I can certainly give you an indication of what I think. I mean, it's a combination of a number of factors really. And planning application income varies year on year, so you may have a couple of more positive years and then a couple of more negative years. I think the general turbulence in the construction market is impacting on planning application volumes. So what we're seeing from people who are potentially interested in applying for planning permission in Sheffield is holding off and waiting for turbulence in the construction market to abate. Obviously we've had rapid interest rate rises, the cost of construction materials is also having an impact, so whereas previously people may have put applications in speculatively or maybe brought things forward in a quicker manner, actually people are taking more time to consider and review their options. I think there are a number of things around the war in Ukraine, I think there was a definite impact in applications around some of the economic turbulence we had following the budget announcements last autumn, which impacted on a number of things as well. So we can give you a more full response and give you maybe a bit of a breakdown, but I think if you were to take sort of general sentiment across the construction industry at the moment, I think people are being probably a little bit more cautious about applying. I guess from a positive perspective, what we believe to be advantageous as we move into the next kind of couple of years is the draft local plan going through examination. So members will be aware for a long time, we haven't had a local plan in this city and that's led to a kind of lack of certainty really from the development industry on what might be the fundamentals around our strategic planning approach. If the plan goes through examination successfully and is adopted at some point next year, then we'll have a really solid strategic planning framework, which we believe will really drive developer confidence. If the plan goes through examination successfully and is adopted at some point next year, then we'll have a really solid strategic planning framework, which we believe will really drive developer confidence and give that strategic framework for people who are maybe waiting to submit their application until there is less turbulence in the construction market. So bit of a long-winded answer there, but I think there are a number of factors at play. But I think as we move out, hopefully into more stable times in terms of the construction sector, I believe that the levels of applications will increase.
Thank you, Will, for helping answer that question. Really appreciated. Do we see any other members who wish to ask a question or make a comment? I don't. Thank you, Jane, for presenting that report. Do I see that members are content to approve the report? I do. Just a reminder that that report is contained in page 39 of your pack. Members are in agreement that we're passing that, so thank you very much, Jane. Really, really appreciate it. That therefore moves us on to item 11, which is the Parkwood Levelling Up Fund acceptance. And that's on page 51 to 62 of the agenda pack. And our presenting officer will be Jo. Hi, Jo. Thank you so much for coming in to present this today.
Thank you, Chair. I trust that you have all had the opportunity to read the paper, which outlines the background and the conditions for the levelling up fund acceptance for Parkwood Springs. In summary, we have been offered from the Department of Leveling Up Housing and Communities as part of levelling up round three funding, 19.4 million. And that's to deliver a new access road to the former ski village to open up that site for future development, site clearance, so removing the debris from the former ski village, and some knotweed within the site, and then some improvements to the park as well, which will include paths, running trails, cycling trails, boundary improvements to make it more sustainable. So in summary, it is recommended that the committee approve that Sheffield City Council act as an accountable body for the funding for Parkwood Springs for the levelling up.
Thank you very much, Jo, for running members through that. And of course, we're really excited about the regeneration that is going to take place at Parkwood Springs. And many of us have been out to that site. We know that a local area regeneration board will be set up, and it'll be chaired by local MP Jill Furness as well. So we really thank her for taking up that leadership role. I can see two members who wish to, three members who wish to make a contribution. We'll take it in rounds of three, if that's okay. Councillor Merzaro.
Thank you. So can you give us more details on where the new access road would be? Also, what facilities will there be on-site for cycle parking? And what will be safe routes for people wheeling, cycling, and walking to get to and from the park? And I have a request as well. Local community members have asked that there be better signage for people who are walking to get to and from the park from Calum Island and Neeps End. It's not clear a good route to get there and back at the moment, and they'd really appreciate some proper signage going in. So could funding be allocated for this? Thank you.
I'm mindful as well that we do have a stakeholder group of partners who work in and around that site and also an area board. So it is really important that we do manage discussions that take place about Parkwood Springs and that people are involved in that discussion at the correct opportunity and the earliest opportunity as well. So in our discussions here, I think we have to be cognisant of that. Jo.
Thank you. In terms of the access road, the current plan is to run it down Oakham Drive.
What drive's that?
Oakham Drive, so off London Road, which avoids the issue of the narrow bridge, which doesn't allow large vehicles. In combination with the access road, we are also putting in cycling and pedestrian routes to make sure that we can encourage active travel to the site. There are no plans for cycle parking within this bid. However, I do believe that as the site is developed out, that will be something which is considered. And in terms of signage, so wayfinding from the site, that is certainly something which will be included in the work which will be delivered through parks. Thank you.
And thank you, councillor Merzaro. Councillor Fox?
Thank you, thank you. Can I just say, we welcome this. It's needed in that area, I think, for a long time. And so thank you for obtaining this funding for us. Mine was about the new road, but I'm aware that you've got a committee looking at that. But could I just say that, could we emphasise on the consultation around that area and use the LAC as well for consultation, but also the local businesses, keeping them informed about the area and communication? That would be just my plea, that we communicate with people, because it saves a lot of emails to us. Thank you.
I'm just going to also go over to councillor Chaplin, because I said I was going to go to rounds of three, but never did it. Councillor Chaplin.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Thank you for this report. This level of investment really is exciting for the area. I suppose three of us here should be declaring interests. As Parkwood Springs not only borders on Southey Ward, but also Hillsborough, City Ward, and Burn Grieve Ward, which takes me on to building on Denise's point, that actually there are two LACs that have an interest in this area, in the north-east LAC as well as the central LAC would be interested in engagement. I'm also interested to note, just going back to 1.8.2, site preparation, you've referred to the Japanese knotweed that's going to hold on the site. Is that in more than one place? And also, are you actually able to eradicate it, or is it proving to be stubborn?
And I'll just take one further question as well from councillor Merzaro. Councillor Merzaro, can you just turn your microphone on? Thank you.
Thank you. It wasn't a question, it's just a request, following on from what Mike and Denise have said. So could Kinko, which is the Calum and Neeps End Community Association, also be contacted to ask for their feedback as well? Because this will be their closest open space. Thank you.
Thank you. And I understand that they're part of the stakeholder group, aren't they? Councillor Chaplin, you just had a very quick supplementary to your own item.
I do apologise. It's a plea for signage at the Southey end as well. There is signage down at the Burn Grieve end, but I do think that the other three wards, it's not really apparent. And we've got, I've got part of Shirecliff Estate in my ward, as well as the Scraithwood Estate. But there's nothing around there to say you are coming on to Parkwood Springs. And of course, sadly, some of my local residents have, over the years, used the Parkwood Springs as their own personal dump-it site. And I know that because I've been involved in some volunteer clean-ups in the past on that area.
Thank you. So we had contributions there from councillor Fox, councillor Chaplin, and councillor Merzaro, who are asking questions. Jo, would you be able to help us out with a response? Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of consultation and communication, as Chair has outlined, we have set up a stakeholder group. That does include key businesses. It has got representation from LACs. Happy to expand that out to further LACs if it's of interest to you. I can send you information. We had the first meeting last week or the week before, which was really positive. Everyone's very energised. It does include Kinko as well. We can share details of that with you, so you can see who is represented within that group. Alongside that, we are also establishing an area board, which is the same format which we have used for other levelling up fund projects, which will have representation from stakeholders. And as Chair said, that will be chaired by Jill Furness MP. In terms of further communication, we are going to look at doing newsletters and potentially setting up a site which will keep people up to date and informed on progress and what's happening on the site. And I know that John Dallo, who works in Parks, is very keen on that sort of stakeholder engagement side. In terms of the Japanese knotweed, I don't know the full answer to that question. We've got to do a new survey on it, because when we actually did the bid, it was in 2022 for round two of levelling up fund, and then we got a surprise for round three. But we can bring details back as and when that survey is done.
Thank you, Jo, for the answers to those particular questions. Do I see any other member who wishes to ask a further question or to discuss this item any further? I don't. Therefore, the report contains recommendations for approval on page 52. Are we all agreed? I can see nods around the room, of course. If any member wishes to dissent, then they would simply raise their hand. I see no dissent, so therefore this item passes and is approved. So thank you very much, Jo, for presenting that report. Item 12 is our committee climate statement. And that is contained on page 63 to 71 of the agenda pack. And I can see that Catherine and Tom are going to be running us through this particular item. Thank you for doing so.
Okay, thanks, Chair. So the committee climate statements were developed in response to the annual climate progress report that was brought to this committee back in December, just before Christmas. And the statements were really intended as a way to restate the cross-party commitment to tackling the climate emergency, both in terms of achieving net zero and also in terms of preparing the council and the city for future climate impacts as well. And the statements also aim to increase the understanding of the impact climate change will have on each of the policy committee areas and what decisions and contributions the committee, the policy committees can be making to address a climate emergency. All the policy committee statements were taken to Strategy and Resources Committee in December. And it was agreed there that each policy committee would bring their statements back to their own relevant meeting to consider and agree to them and ensure that the objectives within them are detailed within your work programme. So the climate statement for this committee sets out the latest citywide greenhouse gas emissions data and outlines the climate impacts that will affect our communities and residents. The statement also acknowledges the leadership role that this particular committee has in terms of the council's response to the climate emergency. And then with specific regard to the transport and regeneration objectives of this committee, the statement then details the long-term decisions that will need to be made, taken to achieve our net zero ambitions, and also the wider social economic benefits that they can bring. The statement then goes on to detail key actions within the committee's work programme that support the net zero and climate adaptation objectives. And they include things like decarbonisation route maps, the local and neighbourhood transport programme, connecting Sheffield programme, the local plan, and the Sheffield flood programme. And I know some of those have been considered today. So committee is asked to consider and to agree to their climate statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Catherine, for running us through that important item. Do I see any colleagues who wish to ask any questions about our committee climate statement? I don't. Well, thank you, Catherine, for presenting the report today. I know that it takes officers an awful lot of time and effort and resource to be able to bring all these things together, so we really appreciate it. The report contains recommendations for approval on page 63. Are we all agreed? I can see that committee members are nodding. No one's raising their hand to dissent, so therefore that item has been carried. Thank you, Catherine, for introducing that item. That therefore moves us on to item 13, which I believe, again, Catherine will be presenting, which is our energy generation and storage and decarbonisation roadmap. We don't make these report titles easy to read, do we, or even to say? But that's contained on page 91 of our report pack, and goes on the way to page 97 in the agenda. Catherine.
Thank you. So following the commitment in the 10-point plan that was adopted a couple of years ago, we've been developing a series of decarbonisation roadmap. I can't say it either. So they're sort of sector-based action plans. So this energy generation and storage roadmap is a third of seven to be produced. It sets out the key actions that the council will be undertaking over the next two years that will start the commencement towards the transition to a smart decentralised energy system in the city. The roadmap's are intended to be iterative, and actions will be added to them over the coming years and as things develop. The current actions detailed within this particular roadmap are very much based on the evidence that was gathered through the Pathways Decarbonisation Report carried out a couple of years ago. And essentially, it's kind of split into three main objectives. So the first one being around how we decarbonise heat in the city. And it present this very much covers work that's ongoing and will continue to take place over the next couple of years, looking at opportunities to expand the heat networks in the city and how we're preparing for forthcoming legislation around heat network zoning. The second objective is around increasing small-scale renewables in the city. And some of the actions that support this sit within other roadmap documents as well. So for example, the Our Council roadmap that was adopted by this committee last July talks about what we're doing in terms of our own council estate through the local renewable energy fund that was agreed to a couple of years ago. So this particular roadmap is more about the enabling measures that need to take place to help increase small-scale renewables. So it highlights actions such as looking at collective purchasing for small-scale renewables, both for businesses and for residents. The third key objective is to increase large-scale renewables. And so in the first instance, that's very much looking at our own land holdings for those opportunities and looking at alternative finance structures. So that could be, for example, through sort of community ownership models. The main action really to sort of, that runs throughout the whole of the roadmap is the fact that we'll be commissioning a local area energy plan, which we've already secured funding for that. The energy plan is a data-driven process that very much looks at place-based solutions and looking at sort of the future energy scenario needs for the areas. And it will involve significant stakeholder engagement, both the public-private sector, but most importantly, with our communities and residents. The process will help identify the lowest route to decarbonised energy in the city. And it will also detail what can go where and who will be responsible for delivering on those. And from that, you know, we can then sort of, you know, hopefully have sort of bankable projects that we can, you know, secure and finance for. The roadmap also details how it links into the draft local plan and the growth objectives for the city, and also recognising the action that we take, you know, must be done in a fair way that enables a just transition to a net zero economy. So the committee is asked to approve this roadmap. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, for the work on this report and for running us through it as well. Do I see any questions from colleagues? Councillor Gilligan-Cubo?
Thank you for this. This isn't really a question, but I just want to say, I think it's a good report and I support it. It's just a technical one. You've got a key, you've got a person for social, a heart for health, and then you've got a building and a leaf for economic. I don't, I just think your key is a bit unclear. What's the green leaf for? That's all.
I'm just going to take rounds of three, if that's okay. I think I saw councillor Auckland indicating.
Yeah, I think there was a bill going through Parliament to facilitate local energy connections. I just wonder if that's been enacted and what implications it might have for us. And it was basically very expensive to secure a connection that made many local schemes unviable, was my understanding. So lots of progress there. And again, we have an energy system that's sort of like connected to power stations, that mass generators, really. So one of the problems seems to me to be getting the, basically reconfiguring the national grid to deliver electricity in a different way. And I just wonder if there's any timescale synergy between what we're hoping to do and what networks and the grid is hoping to achieve. Otherwise, Chair, I welcome the report. It seems like a pretty, lots of pretty good ideas in there.
Absolutely, councillor Auckland. And councillor Campbell-Pew, I think I saw you indicating.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I welcome the report and thank you for the work that you and all the team have done in putting it together. I have once again been slightly triggered, Chair, by a couple of things. First of all, the word ambition appears in this report 30 times. I think what I expect from a roadmap, if I'm trying to get to a particular destination, is a plan, you know, drive along the A whatever road for 30 minutes and then turn left. I wouldn't have a roadmap that says, have an ambition to, you know, arrive in Birmingham at some point, you know. And then in particular, there is, there's a comment that says the goal is that by 2030, we should have begun our transition to a sustainable energy system. Forgive me, I can't find the page. But for us to achieve our overall goal, our policy as a council, set by elected members and reaffirmed umpteen times, cross-party, in meeting after meeting, full council after full council, motion after motion, is that we want to be net zero by 2030. So if we are having documentation which talks about ambitions to do that and talks about having begun that transition by 2030... having begun that transition by 2030, then we're not going to do it. So forgive my indulgence, that's a political point and not a question. But I think my question is to officers, is what do we, as the political leaders of this local authority, need to do? What do we need to give you in order for you to be able to realise these ambitions and to have achieved that transition and to get us to net zero by 2030? Because that's what we need. If we don't plan, then we're going to fail.
I'll let Catherine respond to those questions, and then I can also see that councillor Sang has also indicated to speak. I think I probably would say that, of course, this is councillor Campbell-Pew, this is an ambitious council, and we know, don't we, that in 5.5 years, which is, in a way, would take us to 2030, actually it says, doesn't it, on page five, that Sheffield will have commenced its transition to a smart decentralised and decarbonised energy system with the capacity to meet the growing demands of our city. And I visited Bristol more recently with officers to talk about some of the wonderful work that they are doing there in their council, which we will be seeking to move here. Catherine?
Okay, thank you. So first on the green leaf, biodiversity. I think there's a slight formatting issue. I noticed this when I looked at the papers online yesterday. There will be a public version drawn up that will be much more attractive. So apologies for that. In terms of your question, I think probably you're referring to the local electricity bill. And I'm not going to profess, I know all the details, but there were provisions in there. So, for example, if you had like a community organisation that wanted to generate their own power, there would be mechanisms for them to be able to directly sell that power to people within the street, whatever. That didn't go through, as I understand it, last year. There are other mechanisms. There's an organisation called Local Energy. So, for example, if you've got local energy generation, you can partner with a supplier and then sell that power to residents within a certain area. There is on Saturday a community energy event happening in Sheffield, and that organisation is talking there. So, you know, people are starting to kind of learn a lot more about the different ways that local generation can be supplied local to end users. And yeah, absolutely. So your question in terms of what kind of national grid and the distribution network organisations are doing, definitely. So Northern Power Grid, of which we come within, they're actually hosting an event in Sheffield in a couple of weeks' time, looking at the decarbonisation of the larger infrastructure. So that's something that I'll be attending, because obviously, you know, they'll very much be a stakeholder. And when we start developing the local area energy plan, they'll be a key stakeholder within that. So that probably hasn't overly answered all your questions, but yeah, we are very minded to know what National Grid and Northern Power Grid are doing, and they do have aspirations and targets to decarbonise as well. But yeah, not probably at the rate that we need it to for 2030, and that's why we want a more of a decentralised system within the city. So we've got that local generation going to local end users. In terms of the question, in terms of what we need from our politicians, I'm going to hand that over to Tom.
Thank you for the question. I think in terms of what we need, I mean, I'll just answer the first part of the question first, if that's okay, in terms of kind of stating ambition. And I think, you know, the route maps are very much aimed at kind of the near-term actions that we're committed to delivering. So it does focus on the next two to three years with more specific reference to those actions, such as the LAEP that we'll be bringing forward. I think in setting that out, we do want to still refer to what we need to do over time towards 2030, but we clearly don't have all of the answers at this point in time, or the levers available to us, or funding to set out a roadmap from now to 2030. But it does set out that progressive work that we're bringing forward and actions that we're undertaking. In terms of what we need to kind of, from members to realise our ambitions, the last item that you've just considered, in terms of the commitment around your role on this committee, and how that is a leadership role across the organisation to kind of focus on the climate emergency and influence activity that the council and decisions that the council are making is absolutely central and essential to making the change that the organisation needs and requires, and that the city needs to see that leadership. And, you know, in terms of supporting officers through the kind of the work that we're undertaking and the opportunities that come across, you know, the city and the kind of outward-facing opportunities that are there, a lot of that kind of political support to our ambitions is required to make them real.
Will would also like to contribute.
Sorry to just come in. I just wanted to add a couple of points to Tom's, just in response to councillor Campbell-Pew. I think one of the things, and I think I totally agree with Tom on that, political leadership, and I think that really dovetails into conversations at a national level and with institutional investors as well. I've said this before, but officers are engaged, and politicians at the moment are engaged with numerous discussions with big institutional funders around the country who are looking to invest in renewable energy, in retrofit, in low-carbon solutions. And one of the really, really consistent messages that I hear and others hear, unless you are a council with that political leadership and that ambition to meet targets, then actually the money is going to go elsewhere. So I think it's really, really important that we hang on to ambitious targets. I know they're really, really challenging, and, you know, no one is sitting around in this room today saying that these aren't challenging targets. But one of the things that's really apparent to me in conversations with people like UK Investment Bank, Green Finance Institute, we're talking to institutional investors, we know that even to decarbonise our own housing stock, our council housing stock is going to take several billion pounds in this city. You know, there isn't a public sector funding model that is going to deliver that at the moment, so we need to rely on private finance for an element of that retrofit. And one of the things, the really important things that we need to do is that political leadership. We need to show that we're up for it as a council, but we also need to set out really ambitious targets, because those authorities that do have targets will be the first recipients of the money.
Thank you, Will. I also saw councillor Sang who wished to make a question or ask a question or make a contribution.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. I mean, it's a very welcome report and very needed that we need a roadmap for the decarbonisation of energy generation and storage. I disagree with everything Craig said. It's so frustrating from a member perspective of how we drive this change. I mean, this authority took a very bold decision in terms of its energy heat system, now run by Veolia. Clearly, the authorities, so the city's also got benefits from E.ON's network, and both of those heat networks could be expanded, and it feels they could have been expanded at any point. And I've been in so many rooms where members of all parties have said, can't we expand these networks? And it's turning that ambition into action that's proved the challenge. Equally, I remember when I was cabinet member for the environment and the council was a leader in domestic solar, and that was a dozen years ago. We no longer are that. We didn't take up the opportunities that we had for a whole set of reasons. And since then, solar has become much more, much cheaper, much more economic to put in on a mass scale. We've now got a roadmap, but we haven't got all the steps we need to get us where we need to be by 2030. And I think it's absolutely right that our colleagues in the environment movement remind us that we've gone 3% of the way and we need to get the other 97% in the next six and a half, you know, five and a half years. And we've been talking about this, you know, since, as Craig said, since 2018. I moved notes of motion back in 92, talking about the environment challenge and what we needed to do. And it's really difficult. And I know from the investment perspective, as I know, we've had similar discussions at the Pension Authority, where the Pension Authority is invested in a lot of large-scale renewable energy schemes, just the challenge of this. But we need to do it as a city, and we need cross-party leadership on this, and officers need to understand that irrespective of which members come and go, the three parties together have an ambition to keep to this 2030 target, and we will see this room. We're happy to have ambitious route maps with ambitious actions, because, you know, we can't wait any longer. The world can't wait. Sheffield needs to take a lead and just go to Norway, just go to Sweden, just go to Denmark, just go to Netherlands. They're all five years ahead of us, and we in the UK need to catch up. And Sheffield needs to be in the front of that change across the country. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sang. Do I see any other colleague who wishes to ask a question or make a contribution? I'll just give one final opportunity for Catherine or Tom to respond to any of the points that councillor Sang made.
I'd just kind of highlight that there is significant activity going on in that space. You know, in terms of the heat zoning network activity that's been undertaken, the work that's been undertaken in partnership with E.ON that has been explored at the moment, there is significant opportunity. Some of this is also around how we're working to influence government policy at a national level as well, to actually deliver on some of those ambitions that you've just mentioned, councillor Sang. So there is a lot happening in that space, which we're very positive will kind of reap dividends in the city in the near future.
Thank you very much, Tom. Okay, so that therefore takes us to the end of the discussion on that particular item. I would like to draw our attention to page 91, which is the recommendations on the report which is set out. Are we all agreed with passing the report, with approving it? I can see people nodding, and no member is wishing to raise their hand in dissent. So therefore, that item has been approved by this committee. Thank you very much to both Tom and Catherine for giving us an overview of that particular item. That therefore takes us on to item 10, which is our Sheffield Transport Vision. Now, that's contained on pages 73 to 81 of the supplementary agenda pack, and our presenting officer will be Tom. But before we do that, I think it's probably important that I thank members of this committee and officers who did take part in our collaborative workshop to develop this vision. As a way to introduce this item, I'm sure that we'd all agree that Sheffield's Transport Vision is ambitious, and it's an ambitious plan to deliver a transport network that's fit for the rest of this century. We all know, don't we, that 30 years ago, our city leaders took that bold vision to build a tram network which allowed our city to grow. Now, we are Sheffield, England's fourth-largest city, and we're setting out that bold transport vision with the help of this committee and setting it out for all the way up to 2035, and it's going to help us to tackle congestion by expanding the tram network, improving our buses, and making our streets safer. It is also important to say that around the world, we know that the most successful cities understand the importance of investing in reliable, easy-to-use transport networks to give people genuine choice about how they travel around. We want Sheffield's residents, all of us on this committee, to be able to have those same choices about how they move around our city. We would all agree, of course, that Sheffield is really a fantastic place to live, work and visit, and of course, it's a city that's on the up full of ambition, talent, with amazing natural and cultural assets. But it is becoming even clearer that our city unfortunately is held back by our aged transport network, and we are, as a committee, determined to change that. So thank you to everyone for coming together in that collaborative spirit to draw together our transport vision. Tom?
Thank you, Chair. As you say, I'm really pleased to be presenting the Sheffield Transport Vision, which identifies key strategic transport priorities for the city to deliver our aim by 2035, the city should have a safe, reliable and low-carbon transport network for everyone in Sheffield. As you've mentioned, Chair, the vision has been developed collaboratively, very closely with TRC committee input and officers across the council, in order to clearly communicate the transport ambitions and priorities for the city. These align and have been informed by the Sheffield Transport Strategy, the way we travel decarbonisation roadmap, which was endorsed by this committee in July last year, and the submitted Sheffield Plan, which sets out how the city will grow and develop. The vision also aligns to the Sheffield City Goals and supports the emerging City Growth Plan, which is currently in development, setting out how improved transport and connectivity can support access to opportunity and growth for everybody in the city. At the heart of the vision are the three drivers of the council plan, ensuring that the investment and decisions that the council makes on transport towards 2035 will deliver for Sheffield's people, benefit the city's prosperity and protect the planet. It sets out specific transport priorities relating to travel, both at a local neighbourhood level, but all the way through to trips beyond Sheffield to other cities and regions. To deliver on the priorities will require major investment in our transport system, and the new Sheffield Transport Vision will support the council in securing investment and funding. It will also be important in influencing and supporting the outcomes of the South Yorkshire-Merle Combined Authorities Regional Local Transport Plan IV, which is currently in development. The Transport Vision identifies broadly what will be delivered across the next five years and 10-year period. To support that, a series of new delivery plans are being developed to set out in detail for the people of Sheffield what will be delivered, where and how. The first of these includes the items on today's agenda, the road safety plan, and also the item on the emerging Sheffield Active Travel Implementation Plan. Some of our planning will obviously be undertaken collaboratively. It's essential to work closely with South Yorkshire-Merle Combined Authority across all our public transport ambitions, such as the tram and light rail vision, which is currently in development as well. That's already had significant input from the city, but the vision in front of you today does highlight where our ambition around the expansion of the tram and tram train will provide real opportunity to drive growth in the city and realise some of our economic regeneration ambitions. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the committee might have and support the recommendations.
Thank you, Tom, for introducing the report for us today. Do I see members wishing to make a contribution? I do. Councillor Merzouro?
Thank you. There's a lot of really good stuff in the report, so thank you to unit officers for putting it all together. On page 97 of the supporting pack, the reference to DSA, I don't support the reopening of DSA as an airport, as this doesn't address the climate emergency and it makes it even more difficult for us to achieve net zero. I have questions about the two road schemes on the same page. Are these road capacity building schemes or something else? The M1, I think it's Catcliffe, and the A628 in particular, which are both mentioned on page 97.
Thank you, councillor Merzouro. I can also see councillor Shaw who was indicating to speak.
Mine's more of a comment, so I'm willing to let questions go first.
Absolutely. Do I see any other colleague who wishes to ask a question? Councillor Auckland?
I have a comment.
Okay, we'll go straight to answering councillor Merzouro's question. I think I'm also mindful that this vision was drawn together on a cross-party basis. I understand that councillor Merzouro did raise her concerns about providing, or what we would say would be providing, public transport links to a reopened Doncaster Sheffield Airport, if that was to happen, and she did make us aware in workshops about that. I think this is a particularly new concern. Tom, are you able to address it?
Thank you. Yes, I note the point around Doncaster Sheffield Airport, as you say, Chair. In terms of the kind of schemes that are referred to, in terms of highways schemes, there is reference to supporting national highways, delivery of safety resilience and freight movement improvements on the A628 between Sheffield and Manchester. As it says in that statement, the A628 is an important trans-Pennine corridor between Sheffield and South Yorkshire and the west side of the Pennines. More and more so in terms of national highways programmes, the major... More and more so in terms of National Highways programmes, the major improvements on their corridors are now much more limited to certain schemes in their programme. It would certainly be along the lines of safety and resilience improvements that would be considered for the A628 and that's our understanding of the National Highways Programme. In terms of...
Sorry to interrupt, just in terms of making me understand what it actually means in practical terms, resilience, safety and resilience, what would that mean in terms of the infrastructure that would be taking place?
So in terms of, clearly in terms of the kind of safety aspects, it would be looking at where there is a record of collisions on that corridor that provides or kind of create disruption to the use of that corridor across the Pennines. There are kind of times where there are collisions that that creates considerable delays and closures of those corridors. And similarly in terms of resilience, that will be looking at issues around kind of through the year, how we're managing in terms of the change in weather, whether that is drainage, whether that is other issues that need to be considered in terms of maintaining and retaining access through that route. A lot of the work, potential work and development of schemes on that corridor is yet to be undertaken. In terms of the other reference to highways schemes around junction 33, junction 34 of the M1, to create those stronger links between the economies of Sheffield and Rotherham, working with National Highways to look at local congestion issues. Clearly, there are safety concerns that National Highways have raised over a number of years, particularly around the impact of queuing traffic back from the local road network on to the main line of the M1 and that would be the specific issues that National Highways would be most interested in. Clearly, there is the managed motorways schemes that are in place across that part of the network. We also know that there is a need to review some of the kind of, the way in which those junctions are designed. Junction 33 has just gone through a major improvement, so that scheme is effectively in place. But on junction 34, particularly at junction 34 south, there are some relatively small-scale changes to the junctions to accommodate some of the implications around both the congestion on to the M1 along the slip roads, also managing how those junctions operate when they are under pressure.
Thank you. So I'm correct in thinking that they're not actually widening schemes but using the existing carriageway in different ways?
So in terms of the details, some of those look at the slip road arrangements and access on to the motorway, some of those are changes to the junctions. There may be localised changes to the highway layout and the lane configuration at those locations, but again, those schemes are yet to be kind of developed into a detailed final position.
And thank you, Tom. Can I just take a stock check of colleagues and their desire to make a contribution? Firstly, could you just put your hand up and raise it if you want to ask a question rather than make a contribution that doesn't involve a question? Okay, well, thank you, Tom, for answering those questions from colleagues today. I have Councilor Shaw, I have Councilor Sanga, Councilor Auckland and Councilor Chaplin who would like to make a contribution. Councilor Shaw.
Thank you Chair, thank you Tom for the report. I just wanted to comment on, well, it's page 17, section, talking about active travel schemes. Colleagues may not be aware that apparently January just gone was the highest number of cycle trips along the Sheaf, well, eighth highest month on record for cycle trips along the Sheaf Valley route, records going back some 30 years. So that's not the eighth highest January, it's the eighth highest month overall, so around 600 average trips Monday to Friday. And as we know from previous meetings and reports, there's with, well, negligible impact on surrounding highways and traffic. So these interventions work and, you know, we should give ourselves a bit of a pat on the back for getting projects like that through. Despite the ongoing delays of the rest of that project, this might almost turn into a question because the Shorham Street section and segregated cycleways along there is still very much delayed. I don't know if Tom knows when that might be delivered, but yes, so we may get even more trips and, you know, even more active travel and hopefully we can expand these networks across the city even further. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Shaw. Councilor Sanga.
Thank you Chair, it's really important, it's really important that we have a transport vision, so I'd like to thank the officers, but I'd particularly like to thank colleagues cross-party and the consultants here in terms of developing a vision through workshops and allowing us all to have our say in trying to find a way forward. Transport is not, transport visions and transport strategies are not something for six months or two years or five, you know. Some of this is about longer-term aims and I think it was absolutely right that we refreshed this because the previous transport strategy had been inherited from when the council had a cabinet and when it was single-party control. So if we now, in a world of, for the next few years of no over-control and working together, it's important we've got a shared vision. So I think the process was really helpful, but I would just like to reiterate our starting point, we said transport, absolutely understanding that there's a climate emergency and we're moving to decarbonised transport, but that transport is still needed for thriving cities. And the first thing it's needed in terms of our links with other neighbouring cities, whether that's Nottingham or Leeds, but I have to say the links between Sheffield and Manchester are particularly bad from a European perspective. I can't think of any other cities thirty, of the order of 35, 40 miles apart with such poor links. And so I absolutely support the work of Highways England in terms of looking at the A628 in the same way I support looking at improved rail connections between Sheffield and Manchester. So we have to continue that because from a European perspective, our cities are not well-linked. I also have to reflect from a rail point of view that when you visit London and you go on the Elizabeth Line, that London and the South East have been able to generate a significant amount of investment which those of us in the North have not benefited over for the past 20 or 30 years. So I think there's a real challenge in terms of the big transport questions. I think it's right that that should be in this and clearly, we are an interconnected world and for whatever, you know, we're not going to un-invent the jet engine and allowing people to fly occasionally, hopefully with fuels that will not be fossil fuels at some point and we're getting there, we're not there yet, but that's, we have to have a non-fossil fuel air industry. Manchester Airport is there and clearly, as this report says, some people in Sheffield will choose to use Manchester airports. Equally, this authority has supported the existence of a Doncaster Sheffield Airport ever since Finningley stopped being of need to the RAF and it is a very good runway and a very good place. This authority and our neighbour authorities have spent a lot of taxpayers' money. I don't want to throw that away at this moment, so I fully support the line in this report about a reopened Doncaster Sheffield Airport should have good transport links. In terms of Supertram, clearly, we've been lucky to have a tram network these last, you know, these last 30 years. It does not engage everybody in Sheffield or everybody in South Yorkshire, so not only do I see an opportunity of it coming back into public hands in terms of a refreshing of rolling stock and lines, but it's an opportunity to look at extensions and different lines so more people in South Yorkshire and more people in Sheffield are able to take advantage of trams or of tram trains and that it is the most efficient way of getting a large number of people to and from places. And also from a modal shift point of view, I still believe that trams are an easier proposition for many car users in terms of getting on a tram is an easier change than getting on a bus. As far as buses are concerned, buses, buses, it's, we're not going to get this city working unless we have reliable, frequent, affordable buses and I'm very pleased with the fact that colleagues in other parties have now accepted our position in terms of franchising. I look forward to an affordable, reliable bus service. And on a final point, active travel, in terms of our own health, walking and cycling is better for us in terms of short distances and all the other means of transport. So absolutely very pleased that we've got a report that talks about the need to have active travel as the key to it. So really welcome the process, I think we've got a good document, I think we've got a good set of compromises across the three parties and I think we should go forward with this in terms of a transport vision for Sheffield for the next decade. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Sanga. Councilor Auckland.
Thank you Chair. Well, I welcome the process that we went through and I think we all had a good chance to contribute in the workshops and the consultants handled the process very well and I think we've produced a good document in the round. Regarding Doncaster Sheffield, Doncaster Sheffield Airport, it's not necessarily an argument in my opinion for aviation expansion, I'm not looking for aviation expansion, but it is an argument about improving our competitiveness in South Yorkshire. And aviation is still going to be an important part of improving our competitiveness and that will bring benefits for the whole of the region. I feel that that is correct. But just going to the other end of the scale, I'd just like to point out Chair, as far as I know, and I was only talking to my colleague Andy Sanga, I don't think I've ever in my time advocated anything other than a franchise arrangement for buses, partly because, you know, the safe politics is meant to be the heart of the possible and it led, in terms of the legislation, it's only been vaguely possible for the last decade. So I suppose the fact that we are making progress on franchising is to be welcomed. I've said before in previous years that I feared that our buses were heading to destination dead end and I'm afraid in terms of the challenge we face, the bus has reached destination dead end and I fear it has broken down as well. So I strongly feel the answer to most of our urban transport problems is a bus, safe, reliable, reasonably priced, frequent and zero emissions. My only fear is that we've arrived at the point at which it's not a cheap option. It is going to require investment to achieve that part of the vision. There's going to be, there's going to be no getting away from it, but I hope I'm around long enough to actually get on the first franchise service in Sheffield. If that involves beginning about five o'clock in the morning, I'll be very glad to do that. Thanks Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Auckland and I look forward to joining you on that first franchise service. We know that MCA Board yesterday, they moved forward, they pushed forward to the next stage of the franchising process which is called technically auditing. It's an important part of the step to moving towards franchising. Councilor Chaplin.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Andrew for your comments about the rail strategy, the trans vision, the bus service improvement plan, all things that I would have wanted to say, so I'm not going to repeat that. But I would come back on the bus improvement plan because I think one thing that might be overlooked is, because we're seeing it already, it's been going on for the last few years, is that with bus drivers' training and pay, it doesn't seem to be enough to keep them in a job, so we're getting a huge turnover in bus drivers. And so as soon as stagecoach or the current providers have run a recruitment programme, they're losing bus drivers at the other end who decide that the job is either too stressful or it's not really what they're cut out for. So I do think some serious work needs to be done on retainment of staff and what can help them to stay in what seems to be a much more difficult job than most people appreciate. I was just looking at the little logos for the, comparing them with the one for the train in the tunnel and the one with the tram vision, is that the train doesn't have any overhead cantenary and I think the one thing that we do all want to see in Sheffield is electrified routes because not least of all, it would cut down on the amount of pollution we get from Sheffield Midland Station and the surrounding area from the diesel fumes. You know, for us to be fourth or fifth largest city in the country and not have any electrified connection to other major towns and cities is a travesty. But all in all, I do welcome this vision. Thank you.
And Councilor Fox.
Thank you Chair. I'd just like to say thank you for this report and putting it all together and for the workshop, I weren't able to attend for various reasons, but I did have an input, so thank you for that. Going back to the Doncaster Airport, I have to agree that we do need an airport. We have got, you know, the world is our oyster and we have got family around the world and we want people to go and see their family. We need that transport, that availability. And as we said, Manchester is not an option, we haven't got that connectivity and when we have, it's congestion. And so we really, really do need that and I'm sure, I've been told by lots of people that they were disappointed when it was shut and my mailbox has been full of what can we do to get it back, to get reopened, so I welcome that. The bus services, yeah, people, they told me they have to turn down buses, they have turned down jobs because of our bus service. It's not just a case of a bus, it's a case of a connection. So they can get one bus but they can't get another, which enables them to get to jobs and across the city. So we really, really need to look at that and I welcome everything that we're doing to improve that and the franchise or whatever we need to get them buses around our city working. There's lots and lots of people that rely on taxis, which is a very expensive mode of transport, so we need the tram and buses, so that's my input. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you, Councilor Fox. Do I see any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? I have to say, I would agree with colleagues who have effectively said that it would be wrong for us to turn back the clock to a time where aviation wasn't a part of our world. I think it will be turning our back on working people who do use planes to go on holiday and move around the world. Members have made contributions today to talk about how we need sustainable aviation and we know that Sheffield is leading the way in sustainable aviation with initiatives through Boeing and that's what we need to do. And also, we need to encourage other options as well, like high speed in this country and across the world. I know many of us in this room do support high speed, but I also acknowledge that some parties in this room don't support high speed rail and I say that with regret. So that therefore takes us on to considering this item which is contained on page 73 to 81 of the supplementary agenda pack. Now, the report contains recommendations for approval and those are on page 74 of that supplementary agenda pack. Are we all agreed? I can see nodding, which is good, we are all agreed. No member wishes to dissent, is that the case? You can put your hand up if you did. No, therefore we have passed our very ambitious Sheffield Transport Vision which will take us all the way up to 2035, so thank you colleagues for the work there and thank you for officers as well for assisting us in that. I'm mindful that our meetings are very long and I have had some requests from colleagues to have a very short comfort break at the moment, so if we could do that for two or three minutes, I think that would be welcome. If we can pause the webcast, that would be brilliant. Two and three minutes does turn into five, does eight of our supplementary agenda pack that you will find. And today, we've got Tracy and Tom who are going to be presenting it. Before they do, I think it's probably important to say that this is... Before they do, I think it's probably important to say that this is an issue that's close to all of our hearts on this committee, as members of this committee. And we introduced the report for adoption on the basis that safer roads are a human right, and we want Sheffield to be a place where everyone is free to move in a safe and healthy way every day. Our Road Safety Action Plan sets out how we will do this, and I'm looking forward to hearing members make contributions on this matter shortly. Because we know that statistics show that we need to reduce the number of people killed or seriously injured on Sheffield's roads. And we mustn't forget that behind every statistic is a family or loved one, torn apart by pain and grief. And those numbers, of course, are about people, and people who have set off on a journey and in some cases, never come home. As a committee, we're showing leadership by bringing this report today, by adopting Vision Zero, which is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries, whilst encouraging safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all. Tracy, Tom?
Hi, good afternoon. So yeah, we're here today to seek agreement on the points and actions in the Road Safety Action Plan 2024 to 2029. This document sets out our plan to achieve our aim for a Vision Zero approach, a principle based on the belief that no death or serious injury is acceptable on our roads. Whilst wanting to achieve our ambitious Vision Zero, our aim in the shortest possible time, this action plan acknowledges the significant challenge that we'll be faced to achieve it. We therefore set an interim target of fifty by thirty. This is a fifty percent reduction in killed or seriously injured, as we refer to them as KSIs, by 2030. This will be used to measure progress. We're also advocating a safe systems approach. This is a human centred approach that is built upon two basic facts about people, which are, people make mistakes and will do on our roads, and two, people are vulnerable to being killed or seriously injured if they're involved in a crash. The safe system seeks to design these two facts out of the equation, in a way if a collision happens, it doesn't result in a KSI injury. The safe system is built on five pillars, which are safe users, safe roads, safe speeds, and safe vehicles. The Road Safety Action Plan outlines how Sheffield will work within these pillars of a safe system to continue to reduce KSI collisions and meet our aims of Vision Zero. This includes being data led and prioritising areas of work where we can maximise our budget to prevent and reduce KSI collision. So far, the data has highlighted key areas that we need to work on. This includes pedestrian casualties, which are prominent from around age of ten and consistently featuring the category until early twenties. Pedal cycle casualties have the highest peak from ages twelve to nineteen. Power two wheeler users from sixteen to eighteen year olds. There's a smaller peak at nineteen to twenty-five. Car drivers show the biggest peak from eighteen to thirty-five years old. Car drivers show the biggest peak to passengers, sorry, the biggest peak from seventeen to twenty years old. And all drivers as a total don't have an age peak as such, but from eighteen through to late mid sixty brackets consistently high. We'll be tackling these issues through enforcement, engineering, and education. Our department will be using schemes such as, using schemes through education, through schools and colleges. We'll be working on publicity and communication. Schemes such as school streets and mode shift stars, local safety schemes will be highlighted in the action plan, early action funds, cross and patrol, small schemes, and the use of twenty mile an hour on our roads. These targeted interventions are outlined in the plan in a much more detailed way alongside the data to support and drive the proposed actions. I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Tracy, for introducing the report and the really extensive piece of work that you have done to bring this forward to our committee today, which we all appreciate. Do I see any colleagues wishing to first ask a question? Councillor Moserow?
Thank you. For consistency in lack of confusion, was it feasible to have twenty mile an hour limits outside schools at all times and not just at particular times?
So this is a discussion that we have had. I think it is outlined in the action plan of why we haven't adopted it at all times. Trying to get my wording correct here, so I can precisely describe it. But it seems more advantageous that we don't have it all times for behaviour for drivers, what will be more likely to stick to the twenty during those times where it is more dangerous for children, rather than having it all the time when it's not needed. So speed is not inherently an unsafe thing, but only at the correct times. Is that the correct way of doing this stuff?
Yeah, I think that's right, Tracy. I think there are obviously schools that are located on local residential, in local residential areas, for example, that will be within our twenty mile per hour zone areas. But it's usually those that are adjacent to busier routes, where kind of that reinforcement at the peak times when, as Tracy says, pupils, children are going to and from school, that we reinforce that message with appropriate signing. Usually that's complemented with a visual warning that the speed limit is reduced during those hours, to really make it apparent and aware to drivers, many of which on some of our more main roads may not be familiar with the local area.
Thank you. I can see that councillor Shaw and councillor Fox indicated and councillor Auckland. I'll take all those three together, and also councillor Chaplin after that. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tracy, for the presentation. Councillor Moserow made this point at the walking forum last night about the, I think it was councillor Moserow, about the order of the five pillars. So it lists safe users at the top, but really, our priority should be designing out danger through the infrastructure. It feels like the rail or air industry, if there was safety concerns or issues, they wouldn't give pilots parachutes or whatever. They would just, they would take dangerous vehicles and stuff out of traffic until they're resolved or, you know, they would. And that's very much the kind of the approach that I favour, in that we should take a kind of infrastructure, highways first approach to designing out danger. And it's just the way that these principles are ordered might give people the impression that the onus is on, you know, kids wearing high vests, high vis vests to walk to schools. And then I have another comment about the KSI statistics for motorcycle users and whether those peaks would correspond with the, basically the graduated licence brackets, because I hold a motorcycle licence. Basically, after age twenty, after age twenty-four, you can get what they call the direct access licence, and you don't have to go through the graduated, like power limited brackets. And I was just wondering whether the peaks we see on the graph correspond to basically new people going in at the different brackets or not.
And thank you, councillor Fox?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this report. Most welcoming. Some questions that came to mind when I was reading it. One of them was the extra powers that we've now got for our enforcement officers, I'm sure they're most welcome, because they were often a bit frustrated when they couldn't carry out the powers when they were called out. I'm just wondering if we're extending this to parking on pavements? Have we got those powers? That's one question. The next one is school crossing patrol wardens. I know this has been difficult to recruit this for a long, long time, and we've been wanting to do this. And I'm wondering if we've got any, if we're looking at why we don't recruit them, and can we offer them something else as well as just standing in the morning and the afternoon? Can we offer them something else to do with the safety of our children, to encourage people to come along and apply for these roles? Or perhaps, you know, extra pay, something that we could do to encourage people for those, because I know they're most welcome. Most schools ask for them, and can we have one? The other one is just a comment really about parents educating the children more. And they're the ones that get to the parents, especially around school, parking around school, dangerous driving around school. And I think if we start, I remember years ago, my children used to be on at me about smoking. They're adults now, so we can tell it many, many years ago. And it made me start, because they were constantly coming home and telling me how bad it was. Now, that's the way we could, you know, start thinking about, can we get this safety through to our children? So they're going home to their parents and saying how upset they are that their parents are parking around schools and travelling around schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Auckland?
Yeah, I see we referenced five pillars of the safe systems. I think in highway schemes, there's usually, I've often heard three strands really, engineering, education, and enforcement. And if we're going to be evidence led, I just wonder if officers have a view about whether it's, we have to do all three? Or whether looking at the statistics and the ages, whether actually it could be education or engineering that's the most important intervention to get the figures down? Or whether, you know, it's more enforcement? So people outside, an enforcement officer will get compliance, might not get a penalty, but will get compliance if they're on the spot, is the experience. But we know for a fact we can't be everywhere. But we often get demands to put them everywhere. Thanks.
Thank you for addressing councillor Fox, Auckland, and Chaplin's points.
Okay, thank you very much for the questions. I'll try and answer them in order. So yeah, in terms of the order of the pillars, yeah, yesterday's walking forum, this was brought up, and I think we had some conversations with Ruth and Jenny in that group. And yeah, that's something that we can look at. We've put them in that order because the safe systems approach is an international approach format, and that's the system that they are, that's the order they put them in. But we can definitely look at the, putting them in a different order within our priorities.
Just, so just for clarity, is the order listed in priority order, or is it just that's how they've dropped on the page?
That's just how they've dropped on the page. In terms of KSI stats for power two wheelers and graduated licence, that is something that we do need to look a bit more into the data. We've highlighted in the action plan that there does need to be more of a dive into the data. So that's something that we'll look into, including the demographics involved, areas of Sheffield that we need to target more, and sort of the core reasons, the whys, the whats, the wheres. So yeah, we'll take that point away and look into that further. Sorry, councillor Fox, were you, just to clarify, was it TMA powers, the part six one, parking on the pavements? I might have to defer to Tom here if it's included. I don't think it is, but.
Yeah, so parking on, obstructing footways isn't part of the moving traffic offences legislation. So in certain locations, including the city centre, we have promoted a traffic regulation order to prevent parking on footways. Otherwise, there is kind of an outstanding consultation that the Department of Transport had run, and they are yet to respond to in terms of potential measures that could be provided to local highway authorities to make a, kind of, to enforce parking on footways. At the moment, though, it's not part of the current powers for, under the traffic management, moving traffic offences powers that we received last year.
Could I just add to that? Would it be something we could look at as for around schools, parking on, I know that it's difficult around the city, but something that we could look at around the schools, because that could eliminate some danger?
So I think parking around schools is a real issue, certainly in certain locations. And kind of, without touching on some of the other responses that I'm sure Trace will bring out, you know, our schemes around certain high priority areas, our mode shift star scheme, which is really successful in the schools that we're working within the city, is all about encouraging that behaviour change, kind of doing that, that kind of education of parents through children and the kind of engagement that they're involved in, but also extending into our school street schemes. So wherever possible, we do want to look at different options for making conditions safer outside schools, but also encouraging those routes to schools that are safe. In terms of our programmes for next year, I think we would be able to take away and look at kind of where our schemes might be able to promote those key messages around parking behaviour and kind of safe parking practices, if they don't do that already, and they may well already do that.
Sorry, I meant parking on the pavements outside schools. Could we not roll it out to that? Because I often see that, and that causes a danger to somebody parking on the pavement and when children are trying to get out of school.
So I think as part of our school streets schemes that we're promoting next year, if there are specific areas where a traffic regulation order might be required to kind of really prevent that, and where a double yellow line or other restriction isn't already in place, because we can enforce to the back of the footways where they are in place, and that's something that we can consider as part of that programme of new schemes that we roll forward. It's not something that we currently include, so we'd need to look at that in terms of the kind of implications around including that in. But I'm more than happy for us to look at that as part of the overall kind of schemes that will be developed.
Regarding the question around whether we can target children, for lack of a better phrase, to help parents understand the danger, I understand there has been some work with local area committees in terms of parking schemes where children aren't round with badges on cars, which I think has been a very successful initiative. So we can look at supporting that further and look at what work we can do there. This would definitely come under the safer users pillar in our education approach. And like Tom was saying, we'll be using behavioural change techniques and coding what works, and looking at a two-pronged approach there. What, how can we educate parents to help their children stay safe? And how can we promote that when we're in schools with children? Can we take them, can they take a task home so they can share that with parents and such? But a very targeted behavioural change programme will be continued, yeah. And the other question about the pillars and what we refer to as the three A's, three E's, education, engineer, and enforcement? Yeah, I think we've been using that three's for many years now, and I think we can't have one without the other. We need to educate users, because everybody does have a responsibility to drive safely, learn the rules of the road, and as given, we need to give them the capability, the opportunity and motivation to do that. And we can do that through education, our engineering, and then, yeah, enforcement. We need more enforcement as ever. Again, that is another topic, and how we can get more parking enforcement, more police on the roads, and it's a bigger issue.
You missed my question about school wardens.
Oh, yes, yes. This is something that's ongoing, and we've highlighted. We have got some new members of staff managing the school crossing patrol wardens and the road safety team, and we are looking at how we can, one, retain school crossing patrol wardens, celebrate the fantastic work that they do, and that will hopefully help promote the work that they do. And we're looking at other ways in which, like you say, is it, can it be part of a bigger job within the school that they're at? Can it, can we break that up slightly? Can it be part of something else? We've recently had some people from university as well. Is it, can we break that? We're looking at all the options to see who we can get involved within that project so we can get all the vacancies filled. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I incorrectly said that councillor Chaplin had spoken, but he hasn't. He's next on our list. Then we've got councillor Moserow. Is there anyone else who wishes to ask a question? Councillor Chaplin?
Thank you, Chair. I thought I'd suffered some temporary amnesia for a few seconds. No, I welcome this report. I welcome what you've been saying about the school streets initiatives. We've got a school in my area. Um we've got a school in in my area, um which has entrances on both Palgrave Road and uh and Maynal Road, uh one that does have bollards, but the other doesn't. And uh but I know that you've been, um people in your team have been working with the head teacher um there to uh to affect to affect improvements. I'm I'm conscious that we can do, we can do a lot in terms of infrastructure to make our make our roads safer. But what we don't really have, although you've you have talked about uh information to inform drivers to to drive safely, but we don't really have such a strong handle on that. Uh and I'm conscious that certainly when I walk about in my in my area, I sometimes see people driving at speed well above the speed limit. You don't know whether they've they've stolen the vehicle or whether they're just letting off a bit of speed, a bit of steam because they can, they can see a bit of clear straight road ahead. Um but I I do worry about some people's mental health when they're behind the wheel. Um and what is actually going through their mind and whether they're really are concentrating on the road ahead. Um and I imagine that that must impact on a number of the tragic accidents, the the three hundred or so that we've had in the last year and that it can't all be down to um poor road design. Um don't know if you want to uh comment on that.
And I'll just take councillor Merzuro.
Sorry, I'm just reading through my list. Um it was actually Jenny Clark yesterday who mentioned the five pillars, Richard, so I'm not going to claim credit for her great suggestion. Um really welcome this report and it's great there's going to be additional officer support to work with new drivers. Um I think as a council, we could do more and I have some further suggestions for inclusion into the report. Some of these would need to be passed over to Wasteland Street team because it's within their portfolio. But I think we could promote driver training and driving standards and ensure compliance with things like speed limits by our fleet drivers, our licensed taxis and our contractor vehicles. And we could enforce these more through licensing and fleet management. Um we could work more with police about traffic law compliance, with campaigns on drink driving, mobile phones, seatbelt use and speed limit compliance and promote good driving and considerate road use. I think we could respond effectively on pothole reporting, which is a a real safety concern for a lot of people in vehicles, outside of vehicles, on bikes. Um we definitely need to prioritise footway and cycleway gritting in winter because it stops a lot of people from being able to get out and about because the footways and cycleways aren't gritted, so they're stuck. Um and I think there's opportunities which arise through routine maintenance which could be used to create a more benign road environment, like building out at flared junctions, continuous footways. Um I mentioned yesterday at the walking forum about a scheme that I've seen elsewhere, which is the pre-driver choices scheme, um where people um examine the costs and benefits of car ownership compared to more active modes. And they can delay licence acquisition, which means that it's likely to reduce the disproportionately high involvement of young novice drivers in road collisions. Um and I'm really pleased to see a review of the twenty mile an hour policy and I'm wondering when this will be back um to be discussed at TRC. But the suggestions that I've made, I'd really value them being included in the policy if members are agreeable.
Thank you councillor Merzuro. I'm also mindful, um I guess also of item uh seventeen, um which we'll be discussing shortly, which is the, what is it, the Sheffield Active um travel infrastructure plan, um which sets out um our aspirations with regards to walking um in the city. Um and also mindful of what you said with regards to um Wasteland Street scene committee and the need to make sure that we have further buy-in there. Um I I would add in addition to what you've said, you know, quite clearly you've mentioned about footway gritting, but also about cycleway gritting and also other barriers um for people walking around our city, including lighting as well. And Tom and Tracy, are you able to help address those points from councillor Chaplin and Merzuro?
Yeah, um I'll I'll take the the question on uh drivers and their attitudes. Um we ha- we've all be, we'll have a young driver coordinator appointed um in the next months and they will be focusing on ages seventeen to twenty-five and we'll be looking at the opportunity of extending that to fit what the data is saying into into thirties because we are seeing people uh learn to drive later in life because maybe they can't afford it, it's a costly thing to do. Um and your drivers are more at risk. Um we have we have also previously done and we'll be picking this up again with the new young driver coordinator, work on impulse control and how we can enroll that in our education and behavioural change initiatives. And we will be working with partners to try and reach older age groups as well uh within that. Um like I said earlier, drivers do have a responsibility to drive safely and and follow the the rules of the roads. But what we will do is is try and equip them with as much information and and techniques to to help help them do that. And where it is impossible, where that's not possible, if they have a collision, we will try engineering works to make sure that it isn't a serious or fatal collision. Where a collision does happen, it will be a serious or or slight, and not a serious or a a slight or no harm done. Um for the inclusion of driver training for fleet, um this, we haven't got capacity to introduce this as an addition at the moment, but what we can do is is work within our own uh authority and and work with our own fleet and and help that department out and work with that department more, so I've noted that. Um and and we'll look into pursuing that further to see how we can work. We do have contacts with um our bus companies and our our taxi services so we can again look at extending our capacity there as well where that allows. Um working with uh South Yorkshire Police, South Yorkshire Fire and Rescue, we we work within South Yorkshire Safe Roads Partnership and we we do work a lot with them in terms of messaging that goes out and framing that message in within, again, a behavioural change um framework to make sure that we're making people understand without pointing fingers. Um messaging such as help keep your community safe, we know you're a good driver and therefore drive, so we are working with the police and and we we do sync up our messages so there's a consistency there and work with them with data as well. Um in terms of potholes, footways and grittings, and I asked Tom to come.
Yeah, so there there are tools in terms of pothole reporting, so there's a fixed mind street um uh application that people can use and and do use frequently that goes straight through to streets ahead um for their attention and 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 action. Um footway and cycleway uh gritting, as as yourself and and the Chair have mentioned, you know, there are some some things that we we will need to to kind of work with um Wasteland Street team and um highway maintenance colleagues on. I do expect that that's kind of broader conditions around not just infrastructure, but how we maintain an infrastructure and and kind of at different times of the year to make sure it's resilient will probably come through in terms of some of the feedback we get on that active travel infrastructure plan. Um uh you know, the same point around lighting, what are those conditions that that people expect in terms of feeling safe and actually kind of wanting to 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 walk places at night? Um the same goes for winter. Um uh in terms of the you you point around maintenance and changes to flared junctions, that probably it doesn't fall within the bracket of maintenance, it probably does fall into the bracket of changes that we're making to 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 the highway for improvements. So in terms of, um we don't have a programme of just going out and addressing flared junctions, but for example, the crossing that we are introducing on Salter Lane um as a permanent measure arising from the Nether Edge trial of of that that crossing, we will be making changes to the adjacent junction, um which is a significantly flared junction, so we'll be making changes as part of the overall overall design of 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 our schemes moving forward. And we'll pick up on that particularly where we're looking at corridor based schemes. If we can make improvements as part of our schemes that will potentially have a a beneficial impact on uh on road safety, then then we will look to do that. Um uh we can't guarantee they'll always be picked up, but we will do that as part of our assessment of of corridors and interventions. Um and uh the pre-driver choices scheme, it sounds like it was an issue discussed last night and I'm sure there'll be further investigation into what that looks like. Twenty mile per hour zone policy, um or twenty mile per hour speed limit policy, I should say. Um uh it's down as one of the key actions for for the year ahead. Um so in our discussions with committee, um following on from uh in in into the new administrative year, uh we'll we'll work through the work planning to to confirm when that comes back. Um uh but we will be undertaking that review um following on from today.
Thank you, um Tom and Tracy, and thank you to colleagues for your questions and contributions. Do I see anyone else who wishes to ask a question or make a contribution? Um I don't. Um uh therefore, um the report can ma- contains recommendations for approval. That's on page two of the supplementary agenda pack. Um are we all agreed? If anyone wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. I can see people that are nodding, therefore we are in agreement about passing the road safety action plan and therefore that item is approved. Thank you particularly to Tracy for for putting this together. It's a a wonderful piece of work that's really important for our city, so thank you so much. Um okay, um that therefore takes us on to item fourteen, which is the local neighbourhood transport complementary um programme for twenty twenty four to twenty five. It's on page one hundred and twenty seven to one hundred and forty one of our agenda pack. Um I I'm mindful that we have discussed this as part of cross-party briefings. Our record for passing previous items in this meeting was two minutes and twenty five seconds. Let's see if we can uh that we can beat it. Um David is here to run us through the report, um but I'm I'm not sure that might be a challenge, David.
Well, I I don't know what to say to that. Uh you know, for a start, we're back into the snappily named titles reports, aren't we? So if we gave you its full title, that's at least fifteen seconds gone. Um so we we are here to talk about local uh local area enabled transport complementary programme. It's a it's a title that we use across South Yorkshire. It's a it's it's not one that we just choose to use within Sheffield. Um so the report is just for the twenty four, twenty five uh year, it's a it's a capital programme uh report. Um it excludes round about four point two million pounds worth uh of carry forward from uh from uh from last year's uh uh from last year's programme, which we looked at in a little bit more detail in the in last December's committee report. So what it does look at is a a programme of round about six million pounds covering six key areas. Um they are um around local safety schemes. We've just been hearing about the uh the 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 road safety, the road safety action plan. So the low safety, local safety schemes are are based on current prioritisation processes as opposed to anything that will be reviewed uh as part of the uh the now approved road safety action plan. Um as will uh as will twenty mile an hour schemes. So I know the policy review was welcomed, but in the interim, um the uh the the current programme includes the the continuing delivery of 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 six twenty mile an hour schemes within the, you know, within the next financial year. Uh it also includes pressure and enhancements. Uh we're looking at sixteen crossing schemes, including uh including seven that we've worked with the lax to develop and bring forward. Um improvements to our public rights of neighwa- uh way network, including contributions to uh uh schemes promoted by other council departments that still provide benefit to the public rights of way network. Uh a traffic management programme, uh sorry, a network management programme, which includes data collection and monitoring, uh as well as the uh the final parts of allocations to enable us to deliver the five active travel neighbourhood crossings that were that were approved in September twenty three. Uh and then a cycling programme as well, which does include contributions to la- larger schemes, but our priority is always to use um other sources of of funding, including city regions, sustainable transport settlement first. Um we have had pressures, including uh inflation, supply chain issues, uh and and resources which have impacted delivery. Uh but we are looking at mitigating some of these by, you know, by uh by a significant level of over programming. Um throughout the year, that again, we'll be looking at monitoring and reporting back progress to, you know, to committees should you uh want to look at changing, uh changing the shape of the programme during the year. Um I think finally, it's worth me saying, if approval of the schemes um is, uh it it, sorry, if approval of the shape of the programme um is given today, the schemes still need to go through the the our ca- the council's capital approval process, uh which uh which it takes us through the strategy and resources committee. Um I will say no more because I've probably taken up more than half of the two and a half minutes already.
It was very impressive, two minutes and fifty seconds, David, so thank you. Um do I see any um colleague who wishes to ask a question or make a contribution? It is Mike, hi Mike.
Thank you for letting me speak on this. Um I should declare an interest, um because both the Nutwood Trading Estate are mentioned on page one three six, uh under one point five, point six, point five. Um that is particularly welcome because the easy way out for for industrial traffic would be under the railway bridge, but that's really not an option because it is a very low bridge there. Um and the other route which goes up and into a country lane and then out um is is the one that's causing problems there, so I really welcome that. Um but uh also welcome the the scheme at for Crezik Lane outside Yulands Academy um to to make it safe for students to cross the road there. Uh it'll also benefit students that go into the neighbouring ward as well of Westec. Um uh but immediately underneath that, there's a reference to a Wordsworth Road. Um can you confirm that that is a typo and it probably should be Wordsworth Avenue?
And.
Because it's Wordsworth Avenue that's adjacent Cookson Park Playground.
Thank you councillor Chaplin. Um councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. It's, oh, that's land. Uh thank you, Chair. Um it's just a question for clarification. Uh David, on um uh point, one point five, point one point twelve, um it talks about the schemes including Mid Tilda Street, Air Street. Um just for clarification, is that um relating to the Sheep Valley route or is that the a a a separate scheme?
Thank you. Do I see any other um members who who wish to ask a question or make a contribution? Um I don't. Uh David, two questions there from councillor Chaplin and Shaw.
So I'll have to come back in terms of with Rogue, Wordsworth Avenue, uh and if I can include that in the meeting notes, that's that's absolutely, is that okay? We're more than more happy to do that. And in terms of the uh councillor Shaw's Shaw's question, now we're we're cognizant of of what's happening, obviously, within the, you know, within the Sheep Valley scheme. But, you know, the the data, uh you know, the the data has highlighted, you know, that that particular area as as some something that we need to look at. Obviously, what we wouldn't do is look at putting two schemes in, you know, with two slightly different, uh two slightly different approaches in the same location. So 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 no, it's uh it's 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 separate at this stage. But that's not to say that ultimately, ultimately it'll end up being the same thing.
Um councillor Chaplin, I'm mindful that David uh gave the offer there that he would get back to the committee about that specific name of the street. Are you happy with that? Obviously, we'd make sure that you were included because I know that you're a substitute member and stepping in today, which is great.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy for you to drop me a line on that.
Thank you. Um do I see any other member who wishes to make a contribution, ask a question? I don't. Uh therefore, we move on to um the recommendations uh for this item, which are contained on page one hundred and twenty seven. Are we agreed? I can see people nodding, we are in agreement, therefore that item carries. And we did that in six minutes and thirty seconds and still gave it um justice as well. Thank you, David, really appreciate it and for the work that you've done on that. Um that therefore takes us on to item sixteen, which is um about on-street residential charge point um scheme, uh the TRO consultation report. And um Richard is going to be running through that. Thank you, Richard, for coming in today.
Good afternoon, thank you. Uh this report details the objections and comments received to the traffic regulation orders that have been promoted for the on-street residential charge point scheme. This is a pilot scheme using some grant funding from the National Office for Zero Emissions and is looking to provide uh electric vehicle charging infrastructure in locations where residents do not have access to off-street parking at home. The council do not permit or licence the charging of EVs on-street from a home address where it would require the cable to extend uh on the highway because that can present a hazard. Uh the report highlights that usage of electric vehicles will increase and that Sheffield's uptake of EVs to date have been restricted by low levels of residential charging infrastructure in the city. The challenge is further increased by the high number of property owners unable to install private chargers due to not having off-street parking. The scheme looks to provide some EV charging infrastructure at six on-street locations and in three car parks in residential areas across the city. Uh the proposed on-street charging facility would provide space for two EVs EVs to charge at the same time and restrict the parking base for EV charging only through the implementation of the of the traffic regulation order. This would remove some uh road space from general parking. The design is such that this impact is minimised, but effectively this will be up to three typical car lengths. Residents in the areas affected have received information throughout the development of the scheme and a letter regarding the TRO consultation specifically was sent to over seven hundred addresses, as well as statutory notices and advertisement. This has resulted This has resulted in 30 objections to the traffic regulation orders that are spread across the on-street sites and to one of the proposed car parks. We also received six comments supporting the proposals. There are some common themes highlighted in these objections, and the report includes these along with our explanations and responses. Common themes including concerns that the scheme removes space for general parking in the areas where demand is already high, and a perception that there is a lack of EVs in the area, so expectations that these are not likely to be well used. The impact of the infrastructure on existing parking pressures in these areas should be seen in context with the current and future benefits of the facilities, as well as the small amount of space that would be needed out of the streets or car parks in each of these neighbourhoods. Provision of public charging infrastructure contributes to addressing inequality, the climate impact of private vehicles, and improves accessibility for current and potential users. So the report recommends that these objections and comments are considered, but the committee approves the making of the TROs as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, for putting that report together and running us through it. Do I see any questions or contributions from colleagues? Councillor Gilligan-Cubo? Councillor Shaw? Councillor Gilligan-Cubo?
Thank you for this report. I will declare an interest because some of them are in my ward, but my question isn't specifically about my ward, it's a general question which relates to the objections that you've received. So there's going to be generally two parking spaces for EV charging. So what happens if the residents of that street don't use it as an EV and just park there? They come home from work at five o'clock and they park there until seven o'clock the next morning? Those are the kind of issues that are going to come up, I think. So what are we going to do with that kind of thing?
Thank you, councillor Sangha.
Yeah, it's a wider question. Very much welcome this one, but is there another round of pilots closely following on from this one? I've got a little confused in terms of various schemes about EV charging, and this is a very important set of locations, but I just wondered when the next round was, what was out for consultation?
And councillor Fox?
Thank you. My question was the same, can we enforce when people park there? Thank you.
Thank you, Richard and Tom, if you could help us to address those points.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Obviously, enforcement of any parking restriction is within the remit of Parking Services. So that'd be the first point of call, if you like. If non-EVs are using these spaces, that is the point of us promoting the traffic regulation order that it restricts that space on highway for a particular vehicle type. So if it's a normal vehicle, an internal combustion engine or non-EV using that space, it will be reliant on Parking Services. Observing that, issuing a penalty charge notice for contravening the traffic regulation order.
Councillor Gilligan-Cubo, if you could just put your microphone on.
So would it be possible then for the TRC to work with parking enforcement, perhaps for the first few months, to make sure there is extra enforcement? Because I can see that people will just completely ignore it if it's not enforced quite rigorously, especially at the beginning, to put them off.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a consideration that we can go back. They are aware of the scheme, they have been involved in the development of the proposals. But you're right, when any new restriction goes in, particularly in residential areas, it does take some publicity as well as some enforcement action sometimes. So yeah, we can certainly look at that.
So just in terms of councillor Sangha, your question around kind of further approaches to residential areas, and I guess the main one that we're working on at the moment in relation to residential areas is the Department for Transport's LEVI Fund. And I can never remember what the acronym stands for, you know, there's that many in transport. I can remember it's effectively a potentially significant allocation of funding to South Yorkshire. A bid has originally gone in from South Yorkshire MCA, which we've supported very closely, but it's around about nine million pounds that potentially the region will be allocated, and we expect a significant allocation of that to support the further rollout of EV charging across the city. We are also looking at other opportunities that may be available. Certain places are trialling things such as kind of lamppost charging. So we are looking at those options and more than happy to bring a further update to committee, either through a knowledge briefing or a future meeting when we get maybe more formal announcements.
Thank you. Do I see any other colleague who wishes to ask a question or make a contribution? I don't. Therefore, though I do, councillor Sangha.
Sorry, just in terms of comments, you know, I very much welcome the pilots and, you know, I think we do need to, you know, support our colleagues in enforcement in terms of making sure that it happens. As part of a just transition, we do need to make sure that EV charging is available for on-street parking because the nature of Sheffield, we're not going to have parking spaces, so we need to find on-street EV as a way forward. So really welcome the pilots and, you know, welcome what Tom has said in terms of future schemes and future bids, because the transition away from the internal combustion engine is really challenging, and the cost in terms of EV charging, in terms of the commercial costs, so the advantage of being able to do it in terms of off-peak, really important in terms of giving everybody the chance to move to EVs. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Before we answer councillor Sangha's question, I've just gained some voice, in line with our council's constitution, I have to ask you whether you are minded to extend the meeting by half an hour in order to complete our business. I appreciate that it is an extensive agenda. Do I see colleagues in favour of that? I can see people nodding. Yes, thank you. So we will extend that. Richard and Tom, are you able to help us with Drew's question?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's pretty much answered. We absolutely recognise that challenge, and, you know, it appears that government's kind of potential significant funding will also be targeted towards residential areas. Commercially, you know, the more hub charging, kind of the ultra-rapid type hubs, it may come through more commercially as petrol stations start to transition, as they're already starting to in some places, but the focus around this trial will be definitely learning to inform any further rollouts in residential areas.
Thank you. Do I see any other colleague who wishes to make a contribution, to ask a question? Councillor Fox?
Just going back to enforcement, if a car, an EV car, you know, chooses, they could use that as their own car parking space, couldn't they? Can we enforce that when they're not actually charging the car? You could still be using it to park and restrict. Can we enforce that?
Yes, the TRO is restricting the base for EV charging, it's not for EV vehicles. So yes, that would be an enforceable action.
Thank you, Richard and Tom, for presenting the report today, and particularly Richard, for all the work in putting it together. So that therefore takes us to the recommendations for considering them for approval. They're on page 168. Are members in agreement that we would pass this particular report on On Street Residential Charge Point? I'm seeing nodding, yes, therefore item 16 has been carried. Thank you very much. And I'm just turning my page, and I'm in slight disbelief that we are almost finished, which is great, but we do have a few more items to go, which is, which is great. Item 17, we are moving on to our Sheffield Active Travel Infrastructure Plan, and this is the initial public engagement proposals. That's on page 219 to 232 of the agenda pack, and Tom is going to run us through it.
Thank you, Chair. One of our commitments in the Sheffield Transport Vision that's been endorsed today is to produce a Sheffield Active Travel Infrastructure Plan. This will set out a prioritised series of network improvements for walking, wheeling and cycling across the city, providing a clear plan for delivery and supporting future funding bids. In developing a citywide plan, we'll obviously need a comprehensive underpinning evidence base, an essential part of which is going to be gleaned through early public and stakeholder engagement. So the report in front of you today sets out how we'll build on our existing knowledge and research and fill some significant gaps in our knowledge by tapping into community insights and feedback. We'll be reaching out to people and groups at a local level as part of our engagement, particularly some of those groups that are seldom heard. The approach, the outline to our approach to engagement is set out within the report. And in developing our proposals, we have and will continue to work closely with colleagues across the council, particularly within public health and local area committees, but also with colleagues at the South Yorkshire Mural Combined Authority, who are also undertaking some supporting behavioural insights research. So it's recommended that committee note the contents of the report and approve the approach to delivering the public engagement for the Sheffield Active Travel Implementation Plan, and approve the commissioning of a community engagement specialist to support that activity and work alongside officers in developing and delivering and reporting back on the engagement activity we undertake.
Thank you, Tom. Do I see any colleagues who wish to ask a question or make a contribution? Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tom, for the report. It's just a general comment in terms of like engagement and why we are doing this and why we're building a network and why we're consulting. We're not just building a network for people who already walk or cycle more around the city, we're also building one for people who don't currently, but would if there were one. So it's very important that we reach out beyond the, you know, people who are already, you know, walking and cycling more, and get feedback of those who don't currently. But it's also important that we're not held back or there's no veto from those who don't and will never walk or cycle more, you know, regardless of what we do. You know, we can't let the good be the enemy of the perfect and so forth. Because ultimately, even if someone has no intention of walking or cycling or taking public transport more often, every other person that does is one extra parking space, one less car in front in the traffic queue or in front of, you know, blocking buses and so forth. So this is all good for the good of the city. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Do I see any other colleague who wishes to ask a question or make a contribution? Councillor Mizra?
Yeah, just echoing what councillor Shaw has just said, really welcome this report and really welcome the fact that it's reaching out to groups of people who might not have been heard so much previously. Great.
Thank you. Tom, is there anything that you can give to help us summarise the report and answer those questions?
So I just concur with the comments that have been made, and, you know, I think we do acknowledge that there is a real need to do this engagement work at a very early stage in the plan development. That's an essential part of us really understanding what people's opinions and views are within the city, as well as an opportunity for us to kind of do some of that engagement around why we think kind of an increase in people moving actively around the city is important. It absolutely has to be based on kind of discussions, not just with the people we normally talk to, albeit that's still an important part of the process. We really do need to kind of reach into our communities with the support of the LAX. We want to identify groups that we can go and engage with, that we want to understand their opinions about, you know, kind of what's motivating their decisions to travel around the city. And only if we're getting that kind of clear understanding at an early stage are we going to build and develop a plan and ultimately some of our network design that is going to respond and reflect what our communities kind of feel they need for the city. So it's a big exercise. We want to bring in some of that specialisms to inform our approach, but it's a really exciting opportunity, I think, in terms of being able to go out and talk to people right across the city about something that's intrinsically important to delivering our transport vision.
Thank you, Tom. Councillor Mizra?
Thank you. Yeah, just something that struck me then is that we don't often hear from children about their choice of movements, and they're often really keen to travel actively and independently but aren't given the opportunity to voice their opinions on this. Can we reach out to children more in this exercise?
So absolutely, and I think some of those conversations are happening. I think it's just kind of, you know, we've got lots of discussions and it's how we bring some of that together. So a lot of our mode shift activity where we're engaging with schools at the moment and trying to encourage and educate and influence, that is a two-way process. And I think kind of how we grab that information and use that in the development of the plan is going to be really important, and I agree, you know, the youth council, you know, and how we engage with them, we need to bring in those voices to kind of inform this plan.
Thank you, Tom. I think it's an important one, isn't it? And I'm struck by conversations that I've had with officers and with one council in particular councillor at NAS, who brought together a group of women from the Bemidji community in her ward in Darnall about a recent active travel scheme that we are bringing forward, and how important it was that we heard the voices from her community, voices that we don't normally hear when we talk about active travel, but actually are voices that we need to ensure are integral to the work that we're doing. So I'm really excited that this Sheffield Active Travel Infrastructure Plan will allow us to engage with voices that we don't necessarily hear when we talk about movement around the city, and thinking about how we can support communities to make the change that is required in order to shift to active travel. So that therefore takes us to the recommendations on the report, which are on page number 234. Are we, as a committee, agreed with the recommendations? I can see members of the committee nodding, therefore this item has been approved. Tom, thank you very much for bringing this item forward, and to officers in your team for speaking to us as elected members over the past few months on this item, and also for the diligent work with it. Item 19 is the Lodge More 20 Mile an Hour Scheme, SLO consultation report, and the presenting officer will be Tom and Lisa. Hi, Tom and Lisa.
Hi, good afternoon. This is the objection report to the Lodge More 20 Mile an Hour Scheme. I briefly mentioned this report when I presented in February because it's an extension to the Fullwood 20 Mile an Hour Scheme that came out from the petition that was presented at December's TRC and the responses through that public consultation. As usual, each resident received a letter, a personal plan of the proposals. We received 50 responses of support and 20 objections. It was really nice, some of the support that we received because people acknowledged that the consultation that we ran wasn't a foregone conclusion, and people really thanked us for taking their comments seriously and acknowledging that this scheme was part of their say and the fact that we're very transparent with what we're doing. The objections were following similar themes to what we discussed at Fullwood, air quality against the blanket approach. And I know that in the February meeting, I discussed with councillor Shaw about how we kind of head that off from the beginning, that this was already out for consultation when we discussed at that meeting. when we discussed at that meeting. I've not completely ignored that, I am going to do that, absolutely. So the report is recommending that the scheme move forward, the detailed design is concluded and is installed along with the main Fullwood 20 Mile an Hour Scheme that was approved at February.
Thank you Lisa, thank you for working at such speed to bring this report to committee today. Do I see any colleagues who wish to make a contribution, ask a question? councillor Shaw.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that the usual high number or high proportion of non objections and people sporting schemes, which is a continued trend for pretty much every 20 mile an hour scheme that's come to this committee over the past couple of years, shows how popular it is with residents across the city. And also acknowledge the work of local Forward councillors, including councillor Sangha in working with officers and residents and responding to the petitioners in relation to the previous Forward Scheme from last month and trying to get something that works for that community. And yes, this is another scheme I think, you know, is an example of something that should be definitely devolved to LAX because, yeah, there's hundreds of them on the list and I'd love for them all to come to this committee in for me to speak about how great they are, but I think we'll get through them quicker if we devolve them more. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Do I see any of the colleagues wishing to make a contribution? councillor Sangha.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Lisa and the rest of the officers for the flexibility about getting this additional scheme without the flexibility, you know, both getting it to this report and to this committee in record time. I think that's really welcome in terms of, you know, having a flexible response, but also if we had to wait, if this community had to wait, to wait for a full scheme and if we hadn't been able to add Lodge More to Forward, we could have been waiting an extra, you know, extra three or four years. And I, you know, I think it's really good that we're now able to adopt a much more flexible approach, so really welcome this, really, really good piece of work. And as I say, from my lack point of view, we'll be doing what we can in terms of Redmires Road from 40 down to 30, which sort of completes the jigsaw in terms of, in terms of, in terms of speed on the roads in this part of the west of Sheffield. So thanks again for the report.
Thank you councillor Sangha. Do I see any other colleague wishing to make a contribution? Lisa and Tom, would you be able to help us address some of those points that Andrew and Richard made?
Yeah councillor Shaw is right, they are greatly supportive schemes and our inbox is full of people asking when their area is next. So it's really quite a good scheme to be working on because it's nice to have a scheme that the public really want. And I feel that people feel the comfort of being in one of these schemes. If necessarily, you know, they don't impact scheme like a physical traffic calming scheme, well, I do think that they feel safer just by being involved in one of these zones. So yeah, it's quite nice that although we do have objections, the support always massively outweighs that. And councillor Sangha, absolute record time, the consultation for this ended on the 29th of February. So to turn this round was a task, but as you say, we couldn't have the community Fullwood waiting for this next part to be done. So it was top of my list to make it to this committee and thankfully I've pulled everything together in time to make it. So thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you Lisa for presenting that report and bringing it to us at such speed, it's really appreciated and the work that you've done. The recommendations for the report are contained on page 242. Are we all in agreement to pass those? I see people nodding, so therefore this item is carried. So thank you very much for presenting the report today. Our penultimate item is item 15, which is the High Street Mosburgh Limited Waiting Parking Bays item. It's on page 143 to 151 of the agenda pack and poor Tom has had to present lots of these. Tom, if you run us through it, that'd be really appreciated.
Thank you Chair. So the report in front of you presents the review of an experimental traffic order to introduce limited stay parking bays and some double yellow lines on High Street in Mosburgh. That was a member request through the council's Economic Recovery Fund to try and enable a turnover of parking to improve access to local businesses. Through the advertisement and experimental period, we've received six objections to the ETO, four before the scheme went in, two following implementation, one of which has subsequently been withdrawn. The objections are all set out in appendix D of the report and our response to the objections is set out in section 3.3 of the report. And in considering the issues, we refer to parking surveys that have been undertaken to inform our views in relation to the issues that have been raised. We've assessed the before and after effects of the scheme and overall we consider that the experimental order and the parking bays has had a positive effect on parking turnover with an increase of approximately 50% on the surveyed days. We therefore recommend that the ETO is made permanent and that the objectors are informed of committee's decision.
Thank you very much Tom for taking us through the report. Do any colleagues have any questions or comments on this particular item? I don't see so. So therefore we'll go straight to the recommendations, which one of page 144 of our packs. Are we all in agreement? You can see members nodding, there's no member who wishes to raise dissent, so therefore this item is carried. A record of 1 minute and 49 seconds. Item 18 is related to the digitisation of database management of traffic regulation orders and associated delegated decision making, which again is quite mouthful, is on page 233 to 239 of the agenda pack. Despite its very long title, it is very important. Tom, would you be able to run us through it?
Thank you Chair, and hopefully the report isn't as dry as my throat is at this moment in time. In front of you is a report that informs committee about an initiative to introduce a digital map-based platform for the management of our traffic regulation orders that we promote and have in place within the city. That's through a system, a new system that we're introducing called AppiWay. The benefits of introducing the system are that the overall process around promoting new traffic regulation orders will be more efficient, the access to information from members of the public will be better and it will be more visual and map-based, which many people find easier to understand. And there is an open access element to the data when it's digitised as well, which will support wider use of the information on other platforms. As part of the move to the new AppiWay system, it's necessary that we advertise a notice which proposes the making of a traffic regulation order. That traffic regulation order effectively consolidates and brings together all of the existing TROs that are in place across the city into a, into a version that we will then effectively include within the new AppiWay platform. That consolidation process of traffic regulation order doesn't usually require an advertisement and, sorry, it doesn't invite objections or comments usually when it's advertised. However, in undertaking this approach and reviewing our orders, what's been identified is that there are some restrictions in place on street that don't accord with the underlying order. So we're proposing that as part of the process to introduce the AppiWay system and in advertising the consolidation order, that we allow people the opportunity to make representations to the council as is required following a full traffic order making process. However, given that the restrictions in that consolidated order are in place on street, it's recommended that any decision on objections be delegated to the Director of Investment, Climate Change and Planning. This will mean that a decision can be made more quickly than if it was subject to the committee timetable and minimises delays to some of the projects that are awaiting the commencement of the new AppiWay system because we've had to pause the promotion of new traffic regulation orders since last October. That decision would be made through a report from officers, setting out the issues raised and a recommended way forward, and we would, we would also obviously liaise and brief TRC group spokespeople as part of that process. So happy to take any questions from committee before any recommendations are considered.
councillor Gilligan-Cubo.
Thanks for this Tom. I'm aware with previous changes to traffic that we do kind of upset a lot of people. And a lot of the comments are, well, I didn't know anything about it, how am I supposed to know about it? So I'm anticipating that this will be the same. How are we going to counteract those arguments that people are saying, oh, it's Sheffield Council just doing things without telling us again? Basically.
Tom.
Thank you, thank you for the question. Effectively, the position that we have is that the consolidated order that is then represented and adopted into the new AppiWay system will just represent what is out on street at the moment. And the vast majority of the restrictions that are in Sheffield and on street at the moment have an underlying TRO that is, it represents what's on street. It's only where there is kind of slight changes on street, we're not actually changing anything, we're just capturing that as part of the order making process. So nothing will change on street as a result of this consolidation order, it just purely reflects what is already in place.
So new orders will have a different process?
So, yes. So in terms of once we've got the new AppiWay system in place and people can go in and see, you know, the restrictions that are across the city and that will match what's on streets, when we're promoting a new order, we will do that through the new system. So there'll be a facility for people to go in and see our proposals through the AppiWay system, it's very visual, there'll be maps that explain what those proposals are. And overall, it makes it more efficient for us to kind of promote TROs. We will still need to advertise traffic regulation orders in the local press and we also advertise them through our website as well, but that will be part of the AppiWay system moving forward. It still allows everybody the statutory opportunity to comment and object on any new, new changes on street, it will just be through the new platform, it's a new software platform effectively.
councillor Auckland and then councillor Chaplin.
Do we know from other places that this stuff works? And I'm assuming, I mean normally I do support, even though we tend to just say, only these schemes are good, so we overrule objections. And I normally think objections should come before members. But I'm assuming in this case, it is just a tidying up operation that makes the orders correspond with the lines. And if that's the case, actually I do support it being delegated because, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm beginning to suspect that some of the yellow line schemes that I've been promoting in my ward and others will have been promoting must have been held up somewhere along the line now because, because we're trying to get the software, everything put on the software platform. And I'm also thinking that this software will make it unnecessary because I was around, I do remember that 2008, somebody going around trying to make sure that everything agreed with what was in the orders. Presumably the software will help us make this, no need to rework what's there, hopefully. Thanks Chair.
And councillor Chaplin.
Yes, thank you Tom for the report. And I'm sure you wouldn't have been recommending this unless you had confidence that this is, will be the best way to consolidate all the TROs and then build on them for the future. Have we had to pay an upfront, are we paying an upfront cost for this? Or is this an app that we effectively have to rent, a bit like you do with an antivirus software?
Thank you. Tom, if you could help us with councillor Auckland and councillor Chaplin's points.
Yep, thank you. So are other places kind of doing what we're intending on doing? Yes, there are other places, some of which are referred to within the report that are already implementing AppiWay. There are other systems available and we do have a TRO system already, but it doesn't do some of the things that this system does. In essence, there is a push from central government to move to digitised traffic regulation orders as well. Some places are already doing it, as I've mentioned, but we will be one of, you know, kind of almost an early adopter, but we know that the technology is in place and is working. In terms of consultation, the consultation is exactly the same as it would be when we promote new schemes in terms of the consolidation order subject to this report to inform the new AppiWay system. It is exactly as you described councillor Auckland, this is just effectively a tidying up exercise to mirror what is on street at the moment. No changes will be made on street as a result of that approach. In terms of keeping the system up to date, then yes, this will very much assist us in terms of keeping the system up to date. We will not be kind of promoting, we'll be promoting individual orders, but this will be within the overall database. So it'll be captured, not as standalone kind of legal kind of documents that we have, it'll be within the system. In terms of the software, we are, we are, and we have gone through a process to purchase the software and that is kind of on a licence basis. So there is a cost to that, but there have been costs to other software that we've been using in the past. The benefits of the kind of move to AppiWay, as I said earlier, should make our order making process more efficient, mainly from kind of, you know, instead of an engineer designing a scheme and a kind of a plan of restrictions that then has to be written up into a kind of a long schedule, the system effectively writes those schedules through the map-based system. So it should make the promotion of new orders more effective, more efficient. And yes, there are some orders, some of which are local orders around restrictions, some of which are related to our more strategic programme of transport schemes within the city that are waiting to be promoted once we've effectively advertised the consolidation order and moved to the new AppiWay system. So we are very keen to move to that point quickly so we can then move on, move forward and promote those orders that we've not been able to take forward whilst we've been making this transfer.
Thank you Tom. And of course, a new term to add to our lexicon, AppiWays as well, we'll be using that in the future, I imagine, an awful lot. The report, of course, contains recommendations for our approval, that's on page 234 of our pack. Are we in agreement? I can see people nodding, we are in agreement, which is excellent. Before we conclude our meeting, can I just say thank you very much to members for your contributions, but also thank you to officers and also in particular thank you to Amanda who has diligently supported the committee throughout the whole year and has also supported me. Thank you. And councillor Sangha.
Yeah, I'm happy to support everything you've just said, but I just wanted to thank my colleague councillor Ian Auckland, this will be his last Transport Committee meeting. He has served on, served as councillor for many, many years, more than 25 years.
Twenty.
Yeah, 25 years. And he's regularly been our transport spokesperson, he's clearly been cabinet member for transport for, in two batches, when we were, when we were majority control. He's also been on the South Yorkshire Passenger Transport Authority back in the, back in the day when that organisation existed.
Good Tom.
And yeah, and he's obviously been on this committee the last two years. So really going to miss him, really going to miss his depth of knowledge in terms of buses, trains, trams. But yeah, so real servant for our group, but servant for the city. So I'm like, thank Ian for all that service. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sangha for... Thank you councillor Sangha for proposing that and thank you councillor Auckland for all your contributions. Your amazing transport geek career is unprecedented, it really is. councillor Chaplin.
It's Sarah's last Transport Committee too, so I take it you're going to acknowledge that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you very much for your service to the committee, really appreciate it. Okay, we will conclude our meeting. Thank you very much everyone.